Do have Supervisor Madron is with us, but he's on Zoom today, we believe. That's my understanding. So with that, if you'll all join in following me in the salute of the flag, we'll begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, C.A.O. Hayes, is there, are there any modifications to the agenda?
Good morning, Chair Bass. There are no modifications to the agenda today.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion for the consent calendar.
We have a motion in a second for the consent calendar. For those of you who are listening at home, if you wish to comment on the consent calendar, you should press star nine to raise your hand, so we know you're there. Also, if you're at home watching, be sure to turn your volume off on your video feed because there's a time delay and you could lose your opportunity to speak. So I'll have Nikki keep an eye on that. I think I'll go to those in public first that are with us. So any supervisors want to say anything before we go out to public comment?
After public comment.
After public comment? Okay. All right. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on any of the items that are on the consent calendar? If you'd like to talk on the retirement resolution, this would be the time. If you don't want to talk, like, hold on, we have, we have a change in plans here since no public members have spoken yet. Yeah Supervisor Bone, I assume you had a question or comment or call?
I'll go ahead and read the resolution.
Perfect, then you guys can come up.
Everybody can jump in. And for some of you out there, this is a resolution, not a roast. Yeah, you know who you are, Ed. This one Melva gets to step up here.
Well, actually, why don't you read, you read it first and then we're gonna have her-
No, I want it right here, so we can toast you.
Well, then we're pulling this item. If you'd like to pull it, we can.
I'll pull the item then.
All right, we're gonna, is that all right with you, County Council?
Go ahead and say no, see how that works.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the consent calendar though, then we'll be back for this item. We're gonna take it in order because others may have something else. And if we want to hear more from Melva, we should just do that and give her the opportunity. Okay, that's right. Thank you Supervisor Bone. We'll be with you shortly.
Excuse me Chair Bass.
Yes ma'am?
Excuse me, I apologize for the interruption, but Supervisor Madron-
I hear Supervisor Madron has his hand up, but I had Supervisor Bushnell first. And then we will go to public comment on the rest of the consent calendar, not Melva's retirement.
Thank you. Through the chair, I would just like to recognize Ernie Branscombe for his contribution to the Mesersley Committee, very involved. He was appointed by Supervisor Fennell in 2018, and I just publicly want to say thank you to Ernie and for all of his work that he does for the Southern Humboldt and District Two area.
Thank you. Supervisor Madron, sorry, can't see you, but I hear you're there.
Yes, actually, I've got my camera on, perhaps you can see me. But I'm not sure if we should pull the California Works item with the certificate honoring Christie and Ted McArthur at the Forest Service. Do you think it's best to pull that item? Because I'd like for them to come up to the podium to receive the certificate. So like with Supervisor Bone's item, perhaps we should just pull that. Whatever your preference is Chair.
You know, I, what I would say is, since Christie is here, since you're asking me my opinion, I think Christie could certainly come up for three minutes under public comment. Would that be sufficient for you Christie? Or do you want, do you think?
That would be fine. I'm just curious, do you want Ted to be here? He'll be back in a couple months.
No, he doesn't have to be here, we're fine. Actually, this is just, so, boy, here we go. This is how Tuesdays start when you think it's gonna be so simple. Supervisor Madron, I'll let you make the call about whether you want it pulled separately, if you want to have more than a conversation, more, if you want to have more of a conversation with Christie, then I would suggest you pull this item as well.
Well, I think it could go pretty quick. I don't think we need a long conversation, but I do think we need to thank Christie and Ted for their work again, so I leave it to your preference. I'm finding a way, sorry.
Okay, since you said that, I think you said you-
I'd like you to, I'd like you to pull it, please.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna say I was fine not pulling it, but okay, so, so what we have left on the consent calendar, this is supposed to be a simple day, you guys. All right, so everything but those two items. All right, so people, have anyone like raised their hands yet to speak, Nikki?
No, Madam Chair, we don't. Can I get clarification on the one you were just talking about pulling?
Yes, that's a WR-
Which one?
Four.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you've got those two numbers. I think she might have decided to call Ted. All right, there may be some confusion. Supervisor Bone, we'll get, we'll track her down. All right, so is there anyone here that wants to comment on items that are not about the two items that we now have pulled for discussion on the consent calendar? Okay, I don't see anyone in this crowd looking for that. Do we have anyone with their hands up on the line, Nikki?
No, Madam Chair, there's nobody.
All right, so we will take this back to the board for the consent calendar minus those two items, which we will hear separately shortly. Yes, we have to do a roll call vote, but if everyone's ready, no one else has their hands up. And we do need the roll call, since we've got one absent.
Supervisor Madron? Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five zero.
All right, and for, we will now go to the resolution item, and I did want to say, we did have Christie leave the room, so we're hoping she didn't think we're not hearing this item. No, so Supervisor Madron, if you happen to be listening, if you have Christie's number, I would say please contact her because we may have lost her completely. So at this point, yeah, we're gonna go on to the agenda, the item for the retirement. I'm gonna hand this over to Supervisor Madron, what's your name?
Are you sure?
Bone. I'm no, I'm really not sure today. I think we're gonna make you wait a little longer.
All right, Melva, now you get to come up. Sad but true. Oh, you get a whole resolution. And the amazing part, when you read this, forty-seven years, I'll go, what'd she do? Start when she was eight?
Aw, you're so nice.
Or six?
Thirteen.
Forty-seven years. What the hell were you thinking? Well, she has been amazing, that's for sure. It's a long one, four pages.
Oh, no.
Whereas Melva Parrish started working at the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office with the Youth Summer Jobs Program in June of 1976 in the Sheriff's Business Office. And whereas in June 1980, Melva was hired as a part-time Sheriff's Clerk, and in February 1982, was hired as a full-time Sheriff's Clerk. And whereas in December 1988, Melva was promoted to Supervising Records Clerk, which was later re-titled to Legal Office Services Supervisor, and served in this role for thirty-one years. And whereas in August 2019, Melva was promoted to Legal Office Service Manager and served in that role for three years until her retirement. Whereas in April 2000, Melva was presented with an award recognizing the quality of service, she was consistently provided to the District Attorney's Office Victim Assistance Program. And whereas Melva has forty-seven years of experience with the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office, in which she has served with six sheriffs, Gene Cox, Dave Renner, Dennis Lewis, Gary Phil, Michael Downey, William Hansel. As a side note, since you're retired, which one was your favorite?
All of them.
Boy, she'd take the fifth quick on that one.
All of them.
Whereas Melva has been called the Sheriff's Office Icon and Historian, and can share some pretty funny and interesting stories about the history of her department. And whereas Melva started working at Sheriff's Office when typewriters were used for everything, microfilm was how they stored old records, Melva has helped the department move to their first electronic records management, logistices, and later helped migrate to RIMS. And whereas Melva has received several letters of appreciation from the public, calling her kind, courteous, helpful, I'll throw in awful friendly, and professional, as well as commendations from her peers and supervisors about her being a rock for the department and can be counted on to go above and beyond. Whereas Melva's chain of command recognizes that she has served the community and the department, keeping our core values of dedication, excellence, professionalism, unity, trust, integrity, engagement, and service front and center in all that she does. Whereas Melva's humor, positive attitude, and dedication to her job will be truly missed by everyone that works with her. Now therefore be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and Sheriff William Hansel hereby recognize honors expresses our gratitude for Melva Parrish's forty-seven years of dedication to the county and wish her a long and happy retirement.
Thank you.
Because we used to do that beforehand, but yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second.
All right. All right, Melva, this is a good opportunity for you to say something. If you want to be proactive and preemptive.
She needs a buddy up here. Come on, come on.
Well, I'm very thankful for everyone who showed up and who supported me through my career. I've obviously grown from, obviously, age thirteen to age sixty, and it's time. I decided it was time to go, so it's time for me to retire. I still will come back and work part-time. I, 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 there's just so many people I could thank for being positive in my career. Everybody's been nice. One of the things I was taught from the very beginning is to always represent yourself in a professional manner, and no matter what you do, you represent the Sheriff's Office. So I try to encourage my staff the same thing. I say, hey, you know what, you represent the sheriff. If you want to be the one going in the office explaining your behavior to the sheriff, by all means, but I'm telling you that when people, when people come to the counter, we treat them with respect, no matter what walk of life they're from. And they continue to come back, and they're respectful to us. We, and I take a lot of pride in knowing that all this time I've represented the sheriff in the most professional, positive manner. Yeah, I have bad days like everyone else, come in grumbling, yeah, I mean, everybody has to live their life, but hey, it's, that's what it is. I've lost my mom, I lost my dad, and my middle brother in the last five years, so my strength has been pulled from the office, because they were there for me when I really needed someone to support me through all of that. Not that I, my husband was there for me as well, my family, but the Sheriff's Office and the people that worked there were the ones that really were there for me, and I could feel the hugs when I came in. The sheriff's always sent the nicest cards to let me know that, that people cared and that I wasn't by myself, so, anyway. I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate working with all of you. I still will be around, but like I said, one thing for sure, just so everybody knows, the building wasn't built around me, really, it was already here, and dinosaurs weren't still roaming around.
Just barely.
And dinosaurs weren't roaming around. Actually, I started working here, and at the time, in high school, we were taking typing, so that's what I started with, a typewriter, and then we graduated to computers. No more paper. Big fat lie.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, I appreciate that, I appreciate working with the sheriff, you know, I'm not gonna, I just, they're all sheriffs to me, so I appreciate working with Sheriff Hansel. He has been an inspiration, a good leader, his dedication to what he believes in, and giving it to his, passing it to his employees as well. And like I said, I think that everyone that works there represents him in the best manner that they can.
Supervisor Bone? Want to add anything to that?
No, I'm just, I'm just excited you're gonna be around every once in a while, because you're, you're fun to talk to in the elevator, you get little insights, and she's always got a smile, even when she's having a bad day, which I know she has had a few in the last few years.
Thank you.
But, nice job.
Thank you.
And I always tell everybody, you can tell the respect, there's people here that, you know, there's a lot of people that showed up, and that's, that's a, that's, that's not just to get away from the office, that's out of, that's out of, maybe a little bit, but out, most of it's out of respect for you and the job you've done. And I think they're excited you're still gonna hang around.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet, Melva.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Hi, I didn't have the pleasure and haven't been here, obviously, as long as you, and I want to say, wow though, forty-seven years, what a contribution you have obviously made to the Sheriff's Department, and obviously there, that will be a void. Congratulations on your retirement, job well done.
Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Wilson?
As always, I want to thank folks like yourself that have a long service, long public service career. It's really important, it's just, it just shows the dedication to community as a, I think you were in the SEDA program, was that, was it?
I was.
I too was in the SEDA program in, in high school, and it definitely, it just definitely plugged me into community work and, and values at that time, and I just want to shout out, we should do more of that, so.
Yes, I agree, thank you.
All right, I, thank you very much for all of your, your service through the years, and, you know, Supervisor Bone, I was just saying, he talks about every once in a while having visited the facility, maybe not as a supervisor back in the past. I just wondered if you were there when he, you know, might have been passing through.
She asked, did she do urine, and I go, I don't, maybe.
I don't remember.
No, but it's amazing.
He wasn't a frequent flyer, so no, I don't remember.
It's good, that is good to know. No, it's, it's amazing to have someone staying in the job for so long and still want to come back and contribute, so that's pretty exciting. And sixty's not old at all.
I know, thank you.
So we'll let you sit down, if you like, but we are gonna ask, see if members of the public who'd like to comment, who are here today, on your retirement.
I just want to say a couple words. It's, Melva's gonna be impossible to replace, and, you know, it is the end of an era. I mean, we gotta bring back some child labor laws, you know, something like that, so we can hire another Melva, I guess, but, anyway, she has created such a great team around her, and, and just like, like you all said, and everyone's mentioned already, like the customer service aspect of Melva, no matter what, you know, she can come up and just have people come up to the counter, and she could just stare at them and ask no questions or help them through. She helps everyone through, even if they're looking for court services, or DA's office, or whatever else. She helps people diagnose their issues and gives great customer service and, and steers them in the right direction. And she's the one that will just go the extra mile, she does it every day. And again, she's, she doesn't make herself elevated in there, she, she has an office, but oftentimes she's sitting with her other employees, another team, every day, and just making sure that everyone's working and doing well, and making sure that that customer service is at the all-time high. So we appreciate her, she's created a great team, Veronica is gonna replace her, and, but, you know, as far as all the legacy stuff goes, we can't replace that. That's why we have to have her back. And, and so we're, we're looking forward to having her back and continuing to be a part of the team, but, but as a show of support, like you said Rex, everyone here just loves Melva, and we wish her the best in retirement, because she deserves it. So congratulations, Melva.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item? Welcome. Sorry, didn't see you there.
No problem. Good morning, Regina Fuller, I work in the Sheriff's Department, and I've had the privilege of supervising Melva, and just really wanted to share, when I was being on-boarded four years ago, and I was in the live scan room, and, you know, nervous about the whole onboarding process and being fingerprinted, and Melva came in, and she made me feel so welcome. She was just super excited that I was coming on board, and definitely had that big smile on her face, and she is truly going to be missed, and so I just really, she's, she tells stories of how she used to come to work on her roller skates. So I know, it's like really hard, I was like, forty-seven years, really? I, I can't believe this. And so I, I had the privilege of going through her personnel file, and sure enough, found all those PPAFs from forty-seven years ago. So yeah, it, it was quite a privilege to also, to see all these amazing letters and commendations from, from the public and from her coworkers, just saying how amazing and how helpful, and, and just think that forty-seven years of that is just amazing. So I'm really grateful that we could all be here today to commend her and thank her, and, and I'm excited for her. But yes, just like the sheriff said, we are so grateful that she's willing to come back as extra help, because it is gonna be, I mean, forty-seven years, you, you can't train that. So just to be able to have her on-call for us when we need her to ask some questions is, is really huge, so we really, really appreciate Melva, and thank you for this opportunity for her to have a resolution and be honored. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome DA Fleming.
Good morning. I'm so glad we're doing this for Melva. She's such an outstanding employee and such an outstanding representative of the Sheriff's Office, and for all these years, she's been our go-to person, to the point where I almost feel bad sometimes, because it's sort of automatic. It was just a couple weeks ago, we had another issue come up, tribal council member reached out to me specifically about a case, we couldn't determine the answer in the office, and literally Rochelle said, call Melva. And it was in the process of doing that that she let me know she was retiring, and it really hit us hard, because the issue with having that outstanding type of employee is they really do become your go-to person, and we will miss that. She's been such an incredible aide to my office with all of our questions and concerns, and we will miss her, but forty-seven years, that's amazing, and congrats to her, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone who is here in the public audience that wishes to comment on this item? Okay, although, we'll go to those on the phone, I don't-
Madam Chair, there's no hands up in the-
All right, then we'll come back to the board. Any final comments from board members? Glad you're coming back, part-time, welcome. All right, I think then with that-
Supervisor Madron has his hand up.
Oh Supervisor Madron, yes.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to also chime in and thank Melva for her epitome of being a dedicated and committed public servant. Thank you so much for all your years of service to us.
All right, so with that, I believe we're ready for the roll call vote.
Supervisor Bone?
Uh, okay.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you all for being here, and I did take a thing, a few things a little out of order. Instead of going straight to the item, general public comment, I wanted to do our items that were pulled from consent, so that we can have a little more space in the audience. So we'll go on to the second item that was pulled, which was C4, and Supervisor Madron, I believe that's your item of the certificates of the appreciation, and Christie is back.
Yeah, she texted me, I appreciate that. So Christie should come up to the podium, I'm assuming she is ready to do that.
She is, she's making her way up here now.
Chair Bass, if, if you could ultimately provide the certificates to her, that would be much appreciated. I apologize for not being able to be at the meeting in person today, but Christie Prescott and Forest Supervisor Ted McArthur have just been phenomenal in the support of our communities for trying to figure out how to pull together a lot of new workforce elements, as well as Forest Product Industry Support through what's called the California WRX Initiative, or California Works Initiative, great acronym, Christie. But Christie and Ted have been phenomenal in their support of helping us move into this new century, new decade of working together as community. And I have to say that the Forest Service, I don't know how many of you know what happened out in Willow Creek, I'm sure most people do, but literally the Forest Service and all their partners, including Cal Fire and the volunteer fire departments, the fire service councils, the community, literally saved the community at Willow Creek this summer. It was surrounded by fire from the, from the big complex, the lightning complex fires, and, you know, no lives lost, only a few structures, just tremendous work. And we have so much more work to do out in front of us, so it is an honor to offer to Christie and to Ted McArthur these certificates of appreciation for your partnership, your support, and commitment to our communities and this initiative. So with that, I think Christie would probably like to say a few words. Thanks for being here, Christie.
Welcome Christie.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for recognizing Ted and I today. Ted would like to be here, the Forest Supervisor. He is fortunately, unfortunately, on a temporary assignment as the Deputy Regional Forester in Region Four, so then he did express his gratitude and appreciation for the partnership with the county. And with that, I'd just like to express my appreciation for the work that Humboldt County and Six Rivers has engaged in to pursue work under the Cal Forest Works Alliance. And it's really the leadership vision of the board and recognizing the role that our forests play, and healthy forests play, in creating a thriving world that our grandchildren's grandchildren can thrive in. And the way that we are setting out to do this is focusing on how we can grow a complementary innovative forest product business ecosystem that will support regenerative economies, communities, and landscapes. So with the county as the lead applicant for the Innovative Finance for National Forest Grant, we were awarded that grant last year, and we've been able to advance a number of investments that's helped us lay the foundation for creating this business ecosystem. And just to share a few of the things that we have pursued and had success in over the past year is working with manufacturing affordable housing startup that is looking at developing a glue lamp facility in Humboldt County that would create a market opportunity for smaller diameter wood and good jobs, leading the way for California to be a producer of mass timber products, which is, we'll, we'll talk about that more later. We've also initiated modeling research in partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt that will help inform management decisions, as well as address investor questions about feedstock supply, transaction costs, potential revenue generation. And then we've also been soliciting manufacturing interest from a European, well, Vancouver European-based company who's looking at potentially investing sixty million in manufacturing facilities on the North Coast here to make a biomass-based building material that is gonna be a complete market disruptor, watch out Hardy Board. And we have completed a preliminary systems map to understand the dynamics influencing the forest-to-market approach to improving forest health. I'm really happy to share that late last week, I was, I found out that we had been, at the Pacific Southwest Regional Office, Region Five of the Forest Service, had just authorized funding that will help support us advance this next phase of work, where we will be engaging our community partners in more fully understanding and informing that systems map and those dynamics influencing those relationships. And through that, we seek to build that shared understanding and common language about what that system is, what the barriers are to growing that system, and what the key actions that we need to take to resolve those barriers. That will result in a strategic action plan that will provide a framework for us to work collectively, but also independently in our unique roles and capacities, from tribes to federal, to county governments, to private industry, et cetera. So this would not be possible without the leadership support of Humboldt County and the Forest Service working together. And I would like to recognize the work of Ryan Heights and Scott Adair from the Economic Development Staff in the county. They have been critical in leading out and helping us leverage federal resources to implement this scope of work and advance this, and connecting the dots with different players in the community. So truly without their, their, the leadership support of the county board, and then their capacity within the staff to really make it happen, we wouldn't be here today. So just excellent staff, we're very fortunate to have them as part of our county staff. And then I would also like to recognize at the Forest Service Regional Office, Sherry Reckler, the Leader for Corporate Social Sustainability or Responsibility. She's been a fierce advocate for this work, and has been understanding and seeing that long-term vision and helping to explain that and bring leadership along to secure resources and support for this work. And so her value cannot be, should not be understated. And then lastly, I would like to recognize the support of the Forest Service National Partnership Office, which was one of the funders of the IFNF Grant, along with the National Endowment for Communities and Forestry, and the National Forest Foundation. So without this robust support, all the way up to the Washington Office, to our California Regional Office, to our local governments, we would not be on this path. So I'm super grateful for all of, all of the support, vision, leadership. And with that, I want to say we've had some good wins so far, we still have a lot to do, there's a lot to gain, there's no time to lose, and I'm just very appreciative of, of being able to help facilitate this.
All right, well, thank you Christie, and- And you do have the, I did deliver the certificate.
Yes, thank you.
So, please share that with your coworker as well and everybody else on your team.
Okay.
So, Supervisors, Supervisor Bone and then Wilson.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Ted has been a breath of fresh air to the, I've had a couple of meetings with him. He lives in Ferndale, so, you know, it's been, he's been a real great asset to the community. And as we mentioned with the forest fires, you guys worked seamlessly with Kurt McCray and the Cal Fire to actually fight the fire and save structures. And with Sabell from our office and the Fire Safe Council up there, the structure loss was held at a minimum. So, I appreciate that. I like the idea that you want to make, you know, our region a leader in supplying wood. Again, we used to do that. We used to do that. And it seemed like our forests were healthier as with the new practices. So, I'm great to see that. Region Five has been a great partner with Golden State Natural Resource in our endeavors to make pellets to, you know, support the Kyoto Agreement around the Pacific Rim and over there. And as you said, there are a couple of European companies knocking on a lot of doors over here and looking for land to do some manufacturing here with smaller dimensional and the waste products and the waste products, which is a huge part. I mean, we laughed when somebody said that they wanted to sweep the forest floor, but I think we understood that we do need to take some of the biomass off, you know, we do need to clean our forests up, make them more accessible. And I think we're going to find out our, as we move forward, there's great use to use environmentally friendly and use our forest to the best benefit. So, I appreciate everything the Forest Service, especially you and Ted and your team is doing. And we opened our door up a couple of years ago when we decided, you know, you guys decided we were going to bring the Christmas tree from here. And that opened up a lot of eyes of what the value of our forests are, even though you didn't get it from Humboldt County, but it was close, so appreciate it.
Supervisor Wilson?
I just wanted to acknowledge the, you know, the appreciation that we have with relationship to, of course, the coordination with relationship to the firefighting that occurred this summer, but, and will continue and actually has been a lot in the past. And then also just to recognize that evolution of innovation within your agency. It is not the agency of the past, it's the agency of the future. And I really appreciate that shift that's been occurring and open-mindedness around those things. So, and also, Humboldt County does, is still the number one exporter of redwood and still exports plenty of timber out of this region. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, I want to recognize all your efforts. Amazing. Thank you to yourself and your coworkers. And also, I'd like to make a motion to accept the proclamations.
And present the certificates.
And present the certificates.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. I'll go to public comment on this now. First, we're going to go to those on the phone.
Madam Chair, there's no hands up.
I do not see any attendees with their hands up. So, we will go back to those in the public here. Anyone here care to comment on this item? Apparently not. So, back to the board. We have a motion. Yes.
Sorry. Madam Chair, I have Scott Adair with his hand up.
Scott.
I won't talk too long. I just want to reiterate how pleasant it's been to work with Kristi and with her team. The Cal Forest Works Initiative came before your board as a board-sponsored item by Supervisor Madron, and our staff was directed to work with them on this item. It's been very rewarding to see Kristi in action and to have her as a partner for economic development. So, I just wanted to say, great job, Kristi. Very excited to see you getting this recognition today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, I'm looking at, I finally pulled up something on my phone so I can see if there's hands up. I do not see any others.
That's correct.
Okay, so now we'll go back to the board and I think we're ready for a vote. All right?
All right. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Right, thanks for any confusion this morning, but this was better as a presentation anyway than just consent. So, thank you for putting up with us.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, so now we're going to go back to the public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We do have one person who signed up here. If you are listening or if you're watching at home and you wish to comment under the general public comment period, this would be the time to press star nine to raise your hand. So, we'll go to those who are with us in person today. And we do have one speaker who signed up and that would be Vernon Price. So, Vernon, welcome. And the three-minute timer is visible right behind my shoulder there.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam CAO, County Counsel, ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. My name is Vernon Price and I've been before you, I believe, once before in regards to a grievance that was filed. I have the original response letter back in August 11th of 2021 in regards to an August the 3rd of 2021 grievance at 9:43 a.m. Amy Cohen, at that point, conflicted out and turned over to the Humboldt County Human Resources. You'll find, you should have this all in front of you that I gave this morning, June 13th of 2022, and a final letter, July 22nd of 2022, and there's still not a resolution. I beseech the board today to help me keep the faith and competence in our system. I beseech the board to find some kind of an amicable conclusion in the near future. Thank you so much for your time, your concern and your consideration on this respectable matter. And if there's any questions, comments, or concerns, I'd be glad to address those at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vernon. And is there any other comments from those who are in the public with us? Seeing none, we'll go to those on the phone. I'm not seeing any Anne's up there either. Can we do a test to make sure that everything's working fine with our system?
I'll have one of the ladies.
Thank you. It's like, oh, look. All right, thank you very much. All right, so unless we find out that there's no way to call in, we'll assume that there was no other public comment wishing to come in. So, we'll move on to the next item. And what we're going to do as far as our agenda goes, just kind of skip around a little bit, we are going to do the presentation, the food bank presentation that's going to be coming to us from Supervisor Bone. And immediately following that, we'll go to the planning department items. And the budget item will be held off until after that, correct, CAO? Okay. Supervisor Bone?
Well, this is probably going to be a better report than we've had in quite a few years. Not that it always isn't a good report. We get to see them a little bit at the mail hall carrier and, but I think they've got some exciting pictures and news. I know I've been dropping by. Fundraising extraordinaire has gone really well, thanks to her. God, she's like a blind dog in a meat house after money. I can't believe it. But she's done a, she's done a great job. And I think in these times that we're, as we all know, we're suffering more, you know, food needs are increasing and I appreciate everything you're doing. I don't get to enough of them, but I've been to a few of the drive-throughs and things like that. I've gotten to see your new locations three times now as you move around. But I think this is, I think Nikki has a PowerPoint and.
I was just going to ask which one. I have a video, I have a PowerPoint, I have a PDF. Well, I think we're going to start with some comments first and then.
And then the video probably is the easiest.
The video, okay. Okay. Great. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share some of our activities over the last couple of years with you and the really exciting news about our building finally coming to fruition, which we thought might never happen. For those who aren't as familiar with our services, we've been around for over 40 years and honored to serve this community and work in partnership with so many wonderful people. We have a network of now 18 food pantries that stretch from Garberville in the south to Oric in the north and from Eureka on the west to Hoopa and also Bridgeville and our two newest pantries in Dinsmore and Bloxburg. We have programs for seniors, including home delivery services for those who are too vulnerable to leave their homes, with great volunteers who checked in on them during the pandemic. We have our child nutrition programs. Backpacks for Kids is getting started in another week here at over 32 sites. We're so excited to provide this Weekend Hunger Relief Program to so many children in our community. And the last couple of summers, we had to change things up a little bit. We had been doing the Children's Summer Lunch Program for 23 years. And then when the pandemic hit and so many of the school districts were able to offer extended meal services, we decided to switch gears and provide weekly food boxes for children and their families in the communities of Hoopa, Redway, Lolita, Manila, Bridgeville, and there was one more. But it's been a great opportunity to continue to serve those kids who didn't have access to lunches that the other school districts had. We've also been really fortunate to have a mobile produce pantry and we work in partnership with DHHS Mobile Engagement Vehicle folks so that we're out there in the outline communities where there are very limited access to grocery stores and other resources to get fresh produce and services to people. And it's nice to partner with the county and, you know, conduct our Cal Fresh Outreach, which has been a really successful program, and make sure that when we're talking with people, they're aware of other services that might be available to them. That's obviously been extremely important over the last couple of years as the pandemic has hit so many communities really hard. You know, we saw our average number of people served increase from 12,000 people per month at the beginning of the pandemic increased to 16,000 as the pandemic unfolded. And just in the last few months, with the rising cost of fuel and food and everything else, we've seen a 25% surge across the board. So, it's really concerning. We're happy to be able to have the resources, thanks to our generous community and various state and federal resources to help. And then on top of that, we got into a little stronger role in disaster response than we had anticipated in the past. So, with the, including the storm out in Willow Creek over the winter and fires the last two seasons, we were able to create a part-time position for an emergency and community food response coordinator who's been working closely with folks like Payette Ford Humboldt and the Red Cross and so forth. So, we've been able to get out there regularly and make sure that evacuees and people in shelters had the food they need. So, it's, as I said, it's been an honor to serve people, but it's been a rough couple of years for Food for People. The sewer disaster of February 28th, 2020, kind of, literally kind of blew the doors off all of our plans. We had hoped to just basically do a renovation of our existing building and then, once the water seeped in and the damage examination was so extensive that it was just, it didn't make sense to pour good money after bad. So, we decided to demolish the building. And then, of course, 11 days after that disaster, the shelter-in-place orders were issued. So, we had to completely relocate all of our staff and redesign all of our food distribution protocols. So, I can't say enough about our staff who were willing to swing with us through all of this because it was really, really stressful. So, we are pleased right now, though, that we have the opportunity to look forward to a brand-new building. It hasn't come without its delays. We couldn't have asked for a worse time to try to be starting a building and construction project of this magnitude because the prices went through the roof. It was, I think this delays on the steel building extended six to nine months longer than we had anticipated because the whole world was trying to access the same building materials that we were to get things going again. We've been really fortunate to work with Greenway Partners and Pacific Builders through this process, who've been great advocates on our behalf. And, you know, it's, we just saw it as a great opportunity in the midst of all this chaos that we could expand our programs, we could increase our storage and operational capacity and provide the infrastructure necessary for us to respond to current and future disaster situations. So, we broke ground on March 20th. I think I went by almost every single day trying to see what the progress looked like as they poured the foundation and so forth. And we're currently, fingers crossed, on target to finish construction in December. So, we hope to move in in the beginning of 2023, once everything's set. So, I'm going to turn it over to Carly here, who has been the most extraordinary fundraiser possible. Everybody said, you'll never raise the money with all these rising costs, forget about it. But it's happened, so. So, she's going to tell you a little bit about what our future plans look like with that.
Thank you. I, we've been very fortunate to have strong community support to make this project happen. Several people, several people in this room have played a really big part in making sure that we could kick off the project and follow it through. When we took a step back and decided to tear down and rebuild entirely, it did afford us a really good opportunity to look at our operations and see what it was that we were lacking. And call the last two years or whatever you may, they were a very good learning opportunity for what it takes to be a food bank in emergency situations. So, disaster resiliency was one of the biggest things we wanted to build into our operations, not only having the expanded storage, so we're able to have things on hand like ready-to-eat meals that are very necessary when responding to immediate disasters like fire relief, winter storms, any other sort of emergency we have in our area, but also a space that's flexible. So, Anne mentioned, we have 18 pantries in our network. We have traditionally hosted one in Eureka and it is the largest. So, we wanted to make sure that it had the flexibility to be big as big or small as needed, depending on what we were doing. And we've really built in dignity into that space. People are going to have the opportunity to shop through for nutritional items that meet their dietary needs, their cultural traditions, and really pick foods that work for them. So, we're really excited for everything we have coming up. And one of the big things that was identified and most important to us was expanding our cold storage. Cold storage, freezer storage in our region is severely lacking and as the food bank, it's something that has definitely affected us. So, the cold and freezer storage we built into this new facility is going to give us three to four times what we had prior. We've been in a model recently where, you know, we're ordering weekly just to get fresh produce for our programs and with transportation route issues here, supply chain issues, that often means that we are going without what we had, what we had wanted, what we had ordered. So, we're really excited to be able to have the capacity to prioritize those healthy foods and have that for our region. So, if you want to show that video, some quick photos that give you an idea of where construction's at, and then there's a video at the end that we'll hopefully play that's a little tour through where we're at. This is rendering of what it will look like when completed. This was pouring all of the, all of the foundation, getting the plumbing in track. This is back in April of this year. Still building going up. As Anne mentioned, steel was one of the hardest things to access for us and held us up, but now we have it all and we're very excited. You can see here, that is the cold storage. It has recessed. It had three different pores to make sure it is well insulated for all of our needs. This is the exterior going up. Probably the biggest change you'll see on the outside for a long time. Now, all of the changes are coming on the inside. So, this quick video gives you an idea of where we were at. This was just taken on Saturday. We're going to enter into what will be considered our choice pantry. It has three intake rooms that prioritize privacy as well as room for partners to come in to mimic the model we've had so successfully with the Department of Health and Human Services. This big cavernous area you see right here is going to be our freezer storage. So, if you see that, we're going to be able to go up three tiers of racking inside both our freezer and our refrigerated storage areas, which will be such a boon to the food bank and what we're able to offer. We're going now towards the back area where we'll have offices set up, but everything here on out is dry storage. So, you see how tall that building is? We're going to be able to go up four tiers for our dry storage. It's going to make such a difference to the food bank, our entire operations. It's going to streamline everything we've been able to do and give us the opportunity to expand our programs, expand our reach, and just continue all of the lessons we've learned in the last few years and do everything a little bit better. That's where we're at. The whole project, after many price increases and many delays, is now $6.1 million. And I can say we've already raised over $6 million. So, we are just in the last bit. I'd say we have about 50,000 to 100,000 left to raise, depending on how all of our trained orders come in as a construction project goes. But we are very close to the end and we're really excited for everything it's going to offer. And at this point, we're just hoping we can raise the rest. So, we are not taking on debt in the current rates.
I just have to say, wow, that's quite an improvement. So, Supervisor Bone?
I don't think it can be understated. I mean, their staff has, the last two years has gone over both their volunteer and their paid staff, which is very minimal. These two have been rock stars. I mean, literally both holding the name up of the food bank from years ago with all our auctions for the backpacks and everything else. And you with knocking on doors and everybody that locally has donated, and I can't think of anybody that hasn't, both the rotaries, the timber companies, people that. the rotaries, the timber companies, people that don't want their name mentioned. Another value of shopping local, most of them local, you know? Nothing against the corporate guys, but I mean, most of them local. And the building's looking really good. I mean, it's amazing, because a lot of times you see a drawing and you're going, "It's never going to look like that." It's kind of nice. It's starting to look like that. And so I appreciate everything. I think people would be amazed how many people take advantage of this, because it's, it's once you get over the, it's not a stigma. It's not a stigma. It's, you're helping people to eat healthy and get through a rough patch. I mean, that's it. And I don't think anybody in this room's never had a rough patch. I know I have. And I think that the dignity that you provide, when they do hit that rough patch and provide that food, is superb. And I think, just like any fundraiser, a lot of the people donate, so they never have to use the program. But if it's there, it is there for all people, and I think it's, and the, you've reached out, which I appreciate. I know, and I heard a couple locations in Supervisor Bushnell's district, and that's not easy to do in these times of rising food prices and fuel prices and getting the product there. But you guys have made that choice and done that in trying times, because it's not just happening in Eureka Arcade of Fortuna. It's happening in the Hitherlands, and you guys are taking advantage of it all the way to Orleans, as Bridgeville, Bloxburg, you know, those locations and stuff like that. So I think we all appreciate the way you're reaching out, so. And your fundraising has been wonderful, so. Nice job, kid. Long time from those first days of Rotoract and stuff like that.
That's for somebody who's a master fundraiser himself, so I praise. Supervisor Bushnell.
Hi. Nice to see you both here. I, when I was first elected, one of the events I first came to was Food for People in, I think it was in Kenneville. And wow, the amounts of foods that came in from the schools was amazing. I have been involved in your program in the Southern Humboldt area before I was a supervisor, and through Redway School. And the amount of people that you guys reach down there, food insecurity should never happen, and you guys, your organization makes sure that doesn't. I live in Bloxburg, and I have been seeing the signs at the post office and also over at the church where you guys are distributing, so I really appreciate that. And I know that people, Bloxburg is a long ways to go, probably one of the most rural areas around Humboldt. And I'm just amazed, when I saw the sign that, that the, that it's making it out there and people are utilizing it. The backpack program is amazing. The kids, they love it, they look forward to it. As Supervisor Bone said, they're not embarrassed, and that's great. And then the weekend food that goes home on the school buses on Fridays in Southern Humboldt, it's amazing. So I really want to thank you and your organization. Your building's amazing. I can't wait to tour it, so that's awesome.
We're doing hard hat tours now. You are all encouraged and welcome.
Well, Humboldt County is so lucky to have Food for People, and to recognize what an importance it is here and everywhere to not have food insecurities.
Supervisor Wilson.
I'm just going to echo everybody's thank you for the work that Food for People has been doing over the years, and then the, just the amazing last two years with relationship to the challenges. It's been overwhelming, and I don't want to echo just a bit of what Supervisor Bushnell alluded to, is like, we wish we didn't have to have this program, and it speaks to a lot of other issues and structural issues within our society and that we need to work on. But until we fix all those things, we're so, so thankful and so supportive of Food for People in our community. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Madron, did you have anything you wanted to add? Hands not up at the moment. Supervisor Bushnell.
Well, I was going to make a motion to accept the presentation.
And I was going to second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second. So at this point, we'll go to public comment. I'll start with those who are in the audience here. Anyone that's here with us today who wished a comment on this item? Welcome Director Beck.
Good morning, Supervisors. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I just want to say thank you to Anne and her staff for all the work that they do. Wonderful community partner for us, and want to just make sure that your board is aware that a contract will be coming soon to your board for CalFresh outreach for the food bank at almost $1 million. So that's the support that we give to the community around Food for People, so very much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go to those on the phone, and I still do not see any participants on the phone. And we have called in to make sure that it is, the process is working. So that will return to the board. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I believe you're ready for roll call vote.
Okay. Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bushnell. Yes. Supervisor Wilson.
Affirmative.
Supervisor Bass.
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron.
He may have had to step away for a moment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for being with us today. And yes, please send out something so we can make a schedule to visit to you, so.
Thank you all so much. She did say the other day that if she'd known what she was up against, she probably would have run screaming a couple of years ago, but we're happy she didn't.
When you do a project of this magnitude, what you'll find out is when, now when you call your friends, it's amazing, they don't, they don't pick up. They went to see what message we, because it's never, I just need a little bit more.
I also want to send a big shout-out to the community and all the amazing volunteers who stuck with us through the last couple of years in particular, and the many, many, you know, over 100 community partners that make our work possible out there, too. It really is a community effort, and we thank everyone in the community, so. And thank you for this honor today.
All right, thank you for being here. All right, so now we are going to go down to the Planning and Building Department for two items. The first one is going to be a report. The first one's going to be a report on the launch of a Humboldt accessory dwelling unit website.
Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair Bass and members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford and Keenan Hilton, here to present the ADU website that comes out of a grant that the county received. And we just want to pull it up on the screen here momentarily. I'm sorry, I thought I had it up. And I'm going to allow Keenan to kind of walk us through the website. This is not something you need to take action on. It's just for your information and for the public's information to know this resource is valid. And there it is.
Yes, you can hear me. So back in 2019, the, oh, good morning. I'm Keenan Hilton, a planner in the Long Range Planning Division. And yes, so just trying to highlight some of the work that we've done to accelerate accessory dwelling unit production here in Humboldt County. Back in 2019, the Planning and Building Department was successful, getting a conditional commitment from the California Department of Housing and Community Development for $310,000 as part of their planning grants program. One of the funded projects was launching a new dedicated website, and we have now launched it. And it provides a comprehensive and accessible view into the process of developing an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, in Humboldt County. The goal of the website was really to reduce the number of unknowns for landowners and to empower them to be able to, to know what happens, what to expect, what variables there are, at really every stage of the development process. ADUs, as I'm sure you're aware, distinguish themselves as a powerful approach to meeting regional housing needs. You don't need to subdivide, demolish, pay for land. Many properties are well-positioned in terms of infrastructure to support new development, and they're often very cost-effective to build, especially if you're converting an existing space. They can be a source of rental income for community members, and they can also allow family members to live on the same property. This is, I think, especially relevant for like adult children or aging parents. To build this site, we worked with a web designer, Louder Design, and we also worked with a planning firm, Baird &amp; Driscoll, that's done a lot of work in the ADU space. The expertise of both firms was tremendous, and they really brought their talents to bear on the project. It's easy to navigate, visually appealing, and absolutely full of great resources. One of the exciting pieces, if I can navigate to it, was the fact that we were able to collaborate with some community members and have them share their stories, if it'll come up, with us. Oh, it's not, it's a little bit delayed. I don't know exactly why.
Our internet's not working so well today.
Maybe slight connection issues. But several community members let a photographer come and look at the, take photos inside ADUs that have been built in the community, and also they provided interviews for our department, and we were able to highlight some of the reasons, both their motivations and also what their experience was building. So this is great for confirming to any community members, yes, you can do it, yes, people are doing it. One of the more eye-catching resources that's on the website, is it tracking along, more or less? Is the ADU calculator, which this is something that is pretty complex on the backend, really, but on the front end, it's very simple. And what it is, if it'll load, when I do this at the office, it loads right up. But it allows you to put in a bunch of different inputs, what city you're in, if you're doing new construction versus converting a space, how many bedrooms, and that's just the beginning. There are, there are a number, number of different variables that you can toggle.
Keenan, can I ask you a question? Sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
But you said what city you're in. So this is something that works not just for Humboldt County code, but also for the cities.
So the ADU calculator, it's mostly about being able to calculate costs and revenues. So, and we did actually collaborate with staff from several of the cities in developing this tool in particular.
All right, thank you. That's cool.
Yeah. And so it's, you know, city in a loose sense, you can select any of the cities, and then also some of the communities in the unincorporated area. And then it'll, it's not, you know, it's not scientific, and we're clear on that on the front end, but it gives you a rough idea of when you change the number of bedrooms, when you change the number of baths, when you change the square footage, if it's, you know, your high-end, your medium-end, your low-end construction materials, basically what your, what your expected costs and revenues are. Gives you a ballpark idea. So that's a pretty exciting resource. And then also, the one that I think, if it'll let me navigate to it, be careful. Oh, there we go. Another really exciting resource that we have is the guidebook. And the guidebook is about a 50-page document. It's accessible as a PDF from the website. We've also printed several hundred copies to distribute among county offices. And it, from, from start to finish, from your first brainstorms through permitting, and then actually all the way to considerations of what to include in your lease agreement and how to be a landlord, it walks you through every single piece of the, of the process of building an ADU. Look at the contents there. And I think that this, the guidebook and the website overall is, it's a resource that goes beyond the strict purview of permitting. It's trying to meet people where they are and offer guidance on a variety of important questions when you're approaching a project like this. And it's offering real support for folks trying to navigate both a big financial decision and a new bureaucratic process. I think it manifests the spirit of the 2019 housing element, which was saying, hey, yes, we of course are enforcing regulations, and that's a huge part of what the Planning and Building Department does, but also, we are, we are partners in trying to meet the community need for housing. And it's aligned, I think, with some other programs that are going on. One of the items on the consent agenda today was, the staff report was written by my colleague Andrew Whitney, and we were able to get a grant to fund loans for, for people that are, I think it's at or below 80% median income, to be able to build ADUs. And there's also a state program through CalHFA that provides up to $40,000 for, for folks, and this is a higher income limit, to be able to, to build ADUs. So we're aligned with efforts at the state level, and, and again, I think really acting on the efforts of the 2019 housing element. And it represents a significant effort to, to interact with the community as partners. And that's my presentation today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Keenan. Supervisor Bone, and then Bushnell.
And since you brought it up, the bureaucratic process, do you think we've, and this is great, I mean, I've had people call and says, "Why can't they do this for all our permits?" Because this is, this, I've been through this and everything else. Do you think this will allow somebody that wants to build that ADU, that really wants it for an aging parent or, or an adult that has to move back, or whatever the case may be? Start to finish, if they've got a house that's on a 100 by 120-foot lot, and they want to build a 450-square-foot ADU, one bedroom, small living room, and a bathroom, you know, in an unincorporated area, what's the start-to-finish time? Because part of the bureaucratic process is taking so long. Is this going to be over the counter? Is this going to be able to, you know, I'm looking at John and you for an answer, because the whole, the whole idea of doing this housing is trying to ease the ability to build this housing. This sounds great, but it's the deliverable that always has us concerned. And I, the one thing, and I think, was Andrew one of the success stories?
Yeah.
I saw his picture on there and everything else, so. But I'd like to know how it would be for the layman to jump on there, and what you'd expect for somebody to build a stamp. Now, I know there's going to be extremes, where you talk in an auxiliary dwelling unit of two bathrooms, and I guess it's going to be two bedrooms, and the square footage is growing now. So now you're putting two houses on one lot, and one is, you know, so I don't know what the limitations are as you look at this. But I'm just, what do you, what do you think start-to-finish for the standard is going to be, and the idea that they can go through the bureaucratic process themselves, rather than hire an engineer and, and then a lawyer, and so it doesn't turn into the lawyers and engineers' full employment act, but they can just do it themselves?
Yeah, so I think that's a, that's a great question. And of course, the answer is, there, there are a couple different variables. In the, in the ordinance that was approved, we're actually building a GIS layer that is planning to be featured on the website, that would show people whether they have, you know, their property is a green, a yellow, or a red, in terms of what process they can expect. Green is going to be, this is a building permit project, and that is the areas that are within the fire protection districts. This is the areas that are probably, at this point, inland, and, and, you know, outside of the airport hazard zones, among a couple other variables. But if you, if you're in one of the properties or on one of the properties that's within that zone, this is, this is a building permit process. And, and then, of course, for those properties that are in more far-flung places, for properties where they're wanting to build an ADU that is bigger than 1,200 square feet, you know, there are a number of these different things that trigger additional levels of review. But, but for the most part, I mean, the effort has really been put in to have these be, you know, one of the easiest permits that you can get from, from our department. And I'll, I'll let the director chime in.
Yeah, I think we haven't been able to get, for, for units that are new dwelling units that are individually designed, I don't think we're quite at a point where we can do an over-the-counter review. But one of the things we are working on trying to provide are pre-approved accessory dwelling units that people can come in and use a design that's already been plan-checked, so it doesn't have to go plan-check, and those, we're hopeful that we can do over-the-counter for those.
And then, John, are we going to have a dedicated staff just to ADUs, or somebody, so we're not, so the applicant, so the applicant doesn't hear, I've never done one of these before, rather than have somebody says, "You know what we've got? We've got pre-approved plans, we've got, we've got," you know, to keep that, you know, we had the same problem on one I did a few weeks ago. What they did was they moved this to this, and things like that, in the pre-approved plans, especially on the smaller ADUs. I mean, it's just, and the other thing we're seeing now is, you can buy an ADU off Amazon now, or engineered and stamped. Are we going, is that going to be, are those going to be approved?
So engineered and stamped, if people come in with engineered and stamped plans that come as a kit, the only thing we need to check that come as a kit, the only thing we need to check at that point is the foundation, and oftentimes, they will give the engineering specs for the foundation, and if they're in the right soil type, and the right conditions, and they're showing the right foundation for that, that can be done over the counter. Well, and there's always Title 24, but, which is the energy calculations.
And then the only, the last thing, and I didn't see it, and it's probably in there. Are we limiting these not to be Airbnbs?
We have not started that process yet, but we are working on that.
I don't, I don't want to get into that argument, but maybe on all new structures, since that seems to be, or have a zone where an Airbnb would be acceptable, but some that aren't, and I could, I can think of neighborhoods it wouldn't want, so.
Actually, I will just say, short-term rentals, Airbnbs, that is Kenan's next high priority to.
I understand. I know that's coming, and I didn't want to throw that in there, but it, it's a good way to put the restrictions on new structures now.
Supervisor Bushnell, then Wilson.
So, I just want to clarify, with no ordinance out there, would it be hard to put a restriction on?
Well, number one, this, this isn't about restrictions. We, we could adopt a, a restriction, but it would be better to do it on a comprehensive basis and do it over.
I'm just clarifying, because it's going to trigger a bunch of questions for people. So, thank you. I, ADU stands for, in case someone doesn't know?
Accessory Dwelling Unit.
Thank you, because, you know, when I first got here, all of those confused me. But, um, so you had a lot to do with this website?
Yeah, yeah, I was the, the project manager for it, the, I worked with the design, the designers.
So your excitement is really awesome to see, and it, it seems like it's a very user-friendly. When I, I called Director Ford yesterday, I'm like, what is this? I don't, the books, and he's like, it's not a book, it's a website. And I'm like, oh, okay, let me go look. So that, that was really cool to look through it, and if you're thinking of doing an ADU, it's very user-friendly. I had good service when I was scrolling through, so things pop right up. I got, I, I kept thinking, oh, what about this? And if I went there, the resources were there. So that's really awesome, and great job to you and your team, and to the Planning Department. It's not often you sit in that seat and are so excited, meeting the Planning Department, so it's really nice to see. Thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
John, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think the entitlement from, that comes from SB 9, that created this SPS, excuse me, ADU program explicitly does not allow conversion to short-term rentals. And, and I, I, so I want to be.
Mike, can you say that again? I'm sorry.
As far as I understand, the legislation that created this entitlement for ADUs explicitly does not allow for conversions to short-term rentals within the lifetime of that structure.
For SB 9, that is true. And, and that can be ADUs, but it can also be multiple units. And I think there is a, there may be a limitation on our existing ordinance that I need to go back and look at, in terms of not allowing ADUs to be converted.
Yeah, so it, that would be good to look at, because that is, otherwise, we're not conforming with SB 9. And that, just so if we could take a look at that, that'd be great. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
So, I, I'll just make a motion that we accept the presentation.
I'll second it. We're on a roll.
All right. So, um, at this point, we'll go out to public comment. We'll start with those who are in the audience with us. Is there anyone here who wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go to those on the phone. You have pressed, hopefully, star nine by now, because if you haven't, you could lose your opportunity. We do have three callers that are listening, so press star nine if you did wish to comment on this item. I'll wait a few seconds here. All right, I'm not seeing any hands up. So we'll go back to the board. Got a motion, and that's been seconded. If there's no further discussion, I think we can do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell? Yes, and thank you for the awesome presentation. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
And Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move on to the second item from Planning and Building, and it's a public hearing, so, um, regarding Diabril Farms, the appeal we heard recently. And so we're going to open the public hearing, and I'd like to receive a staff report.
Thanks, Chair Bass, John Ford, and Stephen Santos to present this. This item was continued at the, from the Board of Supervisors meeting to allow a conditional use permit for 24,634 square feet of existing cannabis cultivation. Approximately 22,000 of that is outdoor, 2,200 of it is mixed light. The appeal is relative to a condition requiring that 20% of all irrigation water be used for rainwater catchment. And at the last meeting, there was a typo in the hydrologic report, and it transposed two numbers in the, the height of the well. And so the geologist has corrected that, and has provided a supplemental report, and we also have provided a cross-section to the well and association to, uh, streams and wells in the area. And Mr. Santos is going to present that very briefly.
Okay, Director Ford, I'd also ask your assistance in bringing up that graphic and launching that single PowerPoint slide. There we go. Is that better? And just to add to the director's recap, I do want to state that this conditional use permit was approved by the Planning Commission on July 7th, and the appellant is the applicant appealing two conditions of approval. One condition set by the, the Planning Commission, and one of the conditions of approval by the original assigned planner. And this screen is being shared, and let's go ahead and launch the, the slide. And so this cross-section that is coming up on screen shortly is a graphical representation of some of the essential elements of the well analysis from the geologist, where we can correlate the elevation of the well and the well slot to the elevation of nearby features, such as tributaries to nearby creeks, as well as nearby screen, um, springs. An important feature of this graphic is the red line towards the middle at 1,000 feet. That is our study boundary. That's where we focus the analysis to determine whether there impacts. That 1,000-foot study area equates to over 3 million square feet, or 72 acres. So it is a fairly significant area. So when we look at this graphic, we observe that the nearest surface water features, tributary to Dean Creek and tributary to Steelhead Creek, are outside of our study impact area. And, but we do observe that the tributary to Dean Creek is within the same elevation of, of the well slot. So that deserves a little bit more analysis. When, um, what part of that analysis, when we, when we see surface water in the same, same elevation is, well, what is the recharge rate for the, the groundwater well? Within that 72 acres of just the study area, based on anticipated rainfall, the recharge rate is expected to be 32 million gallons a year. Compared to the annual water budget for this project, which is 313,000 gallons, that, that annual water budget represents just 1% of the annual recharge that is happening just within the study area. Another factor to take into consideration is, not only do we have a finding by the certified engineer, engineering geologist, that this well is isolated from the surface waters, is that if that conclusion is wrong, and there is a link, is there any potential impacts? And I think it's reasonable to ask that question. And so if the well were to draw down significantly, the way to visualize it is a conical depression forms at the top of where the water starts. And that conical depression would need to drop to the same level of the surface waters, not only drop to that, but the plane of that conical depression would also have to extend out that 1,700 feet. That would be an enormous amount of water, and way beyond what the annual water budget for this project would be. So the conclusion by the geologist is that this well is isolated from surface waters and would not impact that, and staff accepts that analysis as, as reasonable. And so this is where we left off in the, in the last hearing, just to make sure we had all these numbers clear. And so that concludes my, my supplemental staff report for today.
All right, thank you. I have Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. So, uh, thank you for reaching out to Mr. Lindbergh, and, you know, realizing that he transposed a number and, and corrected that. When the Planning Commission put in their, they, they wanted what they called rain catchment, what was their, what was their reasoning?
They had general concerns about climate change and, and drought, which are legitimate concerns. But there was no specific finding that those concerns affected this well's ability to provide the projected water needs for this project. And staff's analysis of the appeal also concluded that those general concerns by the Planning Commission were contemplated in the mitigation and monitoring program that was adopted as part of the CMM L U O. And there is a, a safety valve built in to the cannabis ordinance, that if conditions present themselves in a contemporaneous fashion that impact water availability for a cannabis project, the county retains the right to lower the amount of cultivation being conducted proportional to that emergency or to that contemporaneous condition. And that facet of the program is, is, is just baked into the program in a number of, of places. It's built in, not only to the mitigation monitoring program, but it's written into the ordinance itself, and it's also implemented through what we refer to as the acknowledgement form, that every applicant signs, and that's part of the, the project files. So every applicant has noticed from the get-go, from application, that this is a possibility.
So thank you for that explanation. And given that, that the findings aren't, really, there are no findings for wanting to do this, I'm going to make a motion, from the Planning Commission, I'll make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation.
Wilson? We have a motion in a second. If you're listening and you wish to comment on this item, please press star nine so that we know you do want to comment. Supervisor Wilson, anything you wanted to say before we go to public comment? All right. And Nikki, keep an eye out for Supervisor Madron's hand if it goes up. Okay, Supervisor Madron?
Oh, thank you, Chair Bass. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, great. First of all, I want to thank the engineering geologists for, for the graph. I think it's fantastic. It's really nice to have that visual representation, and, um, I, I think it'd be great to have these in all these projects, because it just really, it takes the data and makes it really easy to view it. So, uh, thank you for that, Mr. Lindberg, as well as your narrative. You went into great detail on the assumed geology, and I think it was very accurate, and gave a lot of background to your thinking about hydrologic connectivity, et cetera. So I, I just want to thank you for all of that. Well done. As well as staff, I think, you know, doing this kind of thing in the future would add a lot of credibility to the assumptions or declarations of connectivity and things like that. So that, that's fantastic. I do still think that ultimately, we ought to all be trying to move towards rainwater collection. I understand, you know, that it is, in a sense, a policy change, but I would point out that I think the Planning Commission is trying hard to adapt to things we've learned in the last several years, especially the fact of the multi-year drought. And I applaud them for that. And they've asked this board to act and, and consider some policy changes, but we have not done that. And I believe the outcome of that is, we now have an initiative that appears to have enough signatures to get on the ballot in March of 2024. And we may or may not like the outcome of the initiative, so I would suggest that ultimately, this board does need to consider some possible policy changes and/or ordinance amendments to catch up with where we're at with the drought and other things. And add to that, that the Planning Commission really, you know, they're giving people time, they're not saying you have to do this immediately, they're saying, within two years, or within four years, do this. And then there's also the grant programs out there, that we have secured millions of dollars to help people put in storage and, and to do forbearance. So, um, I'm still going to vote against the appeal, simply because I appreciate the Planning Commission's work, and their efforts to try and move us forward with policy efforts. And I think we, as a board, really need to consider taking that on. So, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Wilson? I didn't know if you were reaching.
Yeah, no, it's all right. And we did public comment.
No, we still have two. We have some folks on the line now.
I'll wait for public comment.
Okay. So now's the time we'll go to public comment. We have two hands up that I see, 4491. Is that okay? Oh, yeah, 4491, followed by 7429. So if you're 4491, press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. I, well, hello, are you there? Can't hear you. Actually, let's come back to that one. For some reason, 4491, we lost your audio, so we're going to go to the next person, but we'll come right back to you. So let's try 7429. Press star six to unmute if you're 7429.
Did you want 7429?
Yes, Robi, welcome.
Okay, good morning. Yeah, this is Robi Tenorio, and I absolutely understand the applicant's appeal of the rainwater catchment. I, I think that a better approach would be to store the water from one of the many wells. I understand there's at least four wells that have been drilled, um, 2016, 18, anyway, yeah, 16, 18, 19, and 20, there were wells drilled. I think that storing the water from one of the many wells in the winter for use in the dry months is, is the way to go. I, I do have a couple of issues with the, the submitted hydrologic report, and I don't think that it's, it's, well, I, I think it's questionable. The, the science that we're, we're currently have is pointing to recharge at the top of ridges being essential for, for recharging the surface water. And it states in the report that being a few thousand feet away means it won't be affected, and, um, so it's, it's not really using the appropriate science. And I think there's a few statements in the report that had me concerned. One is that well is recharged by the water infiltrating from the source areas that are proximal to the well site, getting up to 57,000 gallons a day. But it's also saying that it's a water-producing zone that's considered hydrologically isolated from and not connected to other aquifers in the surrounding deposits. So it's, it's not, it's considered not connected at the same time as it's being recharged by the nearby sources. I just think our area is so incredibly complicated, as I'm sure the geologist knows, he's the expert, and, um, often in the report, it said that it's not connected to surface waters, but I believe the neighbors are concerned about their springs. So, um, that's just. So that's just my observations. I just, I really think we need to store our water. And I also agree with the observation of Supervisor Madron that these type of issues are encouraging people to support this initiative that is coming down the pike. I don't support it, but I do think that it's going to complicate things quite a bit for a lot of people. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Robi. And I don't see other hands up. Are there, Nikki? No. So I have Supervisor Wilson then.
Supervisor, I'm sorry, Chair Bass, 4491 just raised their hand again.
Okay, 4491, press star six to unmute. And yep, welcome, there's.
I am unmuted. Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Yes, Dave.
I'm just here to answer any questions regarding my hydrogeologic report that you may want to ask. And if I can give any further information, I'm just here to do so.
All right, good to know then. So hang on there, don't go away. But you're not part of the general public comment, so we'll go back to the board. But now we know you're there, so stand by. So I'll go back to the board, and I have Supervisor Wilson and then Bushnell.
Thank you, Chair. I have to say, this was, I kind of went back and forth on this one a bit, which shows kind of where we're at in this discussion, I think, is not just a board and not even just as a planning commission, but as a community. And this isn't new or, you know, precedent-setting in that the Planning Commission has been, you know, having a lot of concerns brought to them from neighbors with relationship to springs and water sources and environmental groups with relationships to sources of water related to. And I think it was just brought up earlier, especially in these upper watersheds and the importance of them, because as we've said before, it's not just how much water, it's where the water is being consumed or brought forth. I do think that the Planning Commission and us are starting to think about the, or actually have been thinking a lot about, the drought and climate change and the impacts on the landscape relative to what was approved in these ordinances some, you know, some years ago and the trajectory of that. I think that the, what the Planning Commission didn't make was findings, whether we agree with them as a board or individually is, you know, that's of debate, but they are findings. And in our case, the findings are even less, well, I mean, in our case, you know, how we interpret findings can be different than what the Planning Commission interprets findings. And we're not actually beholden to findings in the same manner. Is that, can you address that? Because isn't this almost at a conditional use permit level? Or can you straighten me out on that?
No, I think you're on the right path. The point is, you do need to make findings based upon the facts that are on the record.
Right.
And one of the struggles that happens right now, I don't want to pine too much or go beyond what you asked, but is the difference between this perception of a problem and having a technical expert who has given their professional expertise on a problem.
Yep.
And in this particular case, there is a geologist, a certified geologist. And that is the, you know, record of expertise or expert record that is formed right now, that there's not a connection of this well to surface waters, to springs, or to other water sources. The geologist actually even identified the governor's executive order and evaluated that. And so that is really the professional opinion that's on the record.
Yep.
To disagree with that would require some form, or should require some form of expert opinion saying that that's wrong.
And I would say that you can disagree with it and make findings on a policy element in sort of an aggregate. That's why oftentimes we create policy that is blanketed across the landscape that may not particularly have impact on a particular side or a particular project in as much as we would, as it does from a policy perspective, from a landscape perspective. And I think that's part of what the Planning Commission's been sort of dealing with. And we're analyzing these often, always, on at least in these appeals, on a project-by-project basis. So I think that that's where there's a bit of a clash. And also, you know, the analysis of whether or not, in aggregate, more wells in an area will have an impact overall. And I think that that is, that's one of the things we have to, you know, grok, I guess. So from that perspective, I do appreciate Supervisor Madron's perspective, which is that, you know, we have policy, we're trying to move in a direction that addresses these changes in climate and these concerns with relationship to the neighbors on this. I'm leaning in the direction of not sustaining this appeal from my perspective because I think that we need to be moving in the direction as an overall, you know, as an overarching policy to move towards the storage. But I absolutely appreciate the individual perspective of this project in terms of, and my fellow supervisors who are really looking at what they have in front of them with relationship to the report. And those are two different perspectives that are being expressed here today. And I can, I definitely kind of on the fence on that, and my vote will reflect that on the fence perspective. Thanks.
So I have Supervisors Bushnell and Bone.
Thank you through the chair. So I also agree that if this is going to be what the commission is, the Planning Commission is looking at in the future, that policy is really important. One, for the applicant to know what's coming forward for them. And so I 100% agree. At this time, though, it is not our policy. And I also super appreciate Robi's thoughts of rain catchment or forbearance storage. Had the, had the Planning Commission said forbearance storage, it would be different than rain catchment, which are two different things. And I'm not, their findings for rain catchment, I don't, I don't agree with. I'm just going to say that. I appreciate the thoughts of both Madron and Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Wilson towards policy. I think that it's really unfair that applicants have a policy in front of them that says you can do this, and then you can do this if you get a certification or get, you know, an analysis from a geologist, which all of that costs money. And they have done everything that's been required of them. And then for then to come back and say, oh, but, let's go ahead and do this just because. And that's where I fundamentally have a problem, without it being in the ordinance or in the policy. I don't disagree that water is number one key issue with any cultivation project, but it should also be number one for every project, not just cultivation. And I tend to really want to bite back when we do this for cultivation, but we don't do it for any other. And so I am absolutely going to be voting to, with staff recommendations. Thank you for all of your guys' detail. And let's hope that we get some, if this is the way that this is going to go, we get some policy and ordinance changes coming forward.
All right. Any other comments? Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to reiterate again how I agree with Supervisor Bushnell with the consistency of these resource decisions on just trying to find consistency with all of our resource users as opposed to just one. So, I mean, I was just talking to Director Ford the other day because there was an issue around light pollution and how our dark skies ordinance only applies to this use in the county and doesn't apply to any other development because we don't have a, we don't have a dark skies ordinance unlike many, many other places. And so it's just another example that we're, you know, that, of that. So I appreciate that, and I just want to put it into the record. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I think we're ready to vote.
Supervisor Madron is.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Good discussion, and I also agree with Supervisor Bushnell that, you know, we ought to really be thinking about, and Supervisor Wilson, that storage, forbearance, rainwater collection, these things should apply to all development ultimately. But I also had a great conversation with Director Ford yesterday about how we need grant programs that not only provide assistance to cannabis farmers to do this, but to all our organic food producers as well as everybody in the community. Ultimately, you know, we're all going to be probably looking to store rainwater and/or forbear in some form in the future here if things continue the way they have been with climate change. And so I think it'd be great to be pursuing grant funds to help our organic food farmers and all residences to really be putting in some storage and rainwater collection. And there's more work to do at the state level. Supervisor Bushnell and myself met with Maguire's staff and others to try and talk about how to increase incentives in regards to property tax improvement waivers for rainwater storage and things like that. So very much want to continue supporting staff work on that particular type of work. I also want to say that I have been contacted by a number of landowners around this particular site who did not want to submit letters or come on and make comments because they're afraid of speaking out against their neighbors. So that sometimes exists as well, where there can absolutely be concerns out there, but they don't come to the surface. And, you know, that's on them, and they did figure out how to be able to do that. But I just wanted to say that there have been concerns from adjacent downslope landowners about impacts to their springs in particular. Sometimes even 1,000 feet or more is not that big of a distance in terms of an impact to a downslope spring. And, you know, I'm not quite sure how we go about analyzing whether the existing wells or springs, a lot of times these springs can be somewhat hidden and not all that obvious simply by aerial photography. You literally have to be able to identify them on the ground, and that involves neighbors and checking in with them. And also on wells, I realize people are supposed to get permits to drill a well and have a well log and all that, but there are many wells that have been drilled over the years without that, and they do exist and people are using them. But those don't end up on the list because they don't pop up in a search of existing permitted wells and things like that. So I think there are additional concerns. I've already expressed the rest of my concerns in that regard. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we're ready to vote. So Nikki, please.
Okay, Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
No.
And Supervisor Madron?
No.
All right, we're closing that public hearing. I have had a request by one of our board members to take a really brief break. And I know we want to fit Tabitha in with our budget, so I'd say I'm going to sit here and hopefully, literally like a three-minute break if you really need to take off because we want to try to get that done.
We could. Go ahead, I will come back.
Pass it over now to the CAO's office regarding our budget adoption. CAO Hayes?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Today is finally the day where we will adopt the budget a little bit later than we normally would take this action. But we have deliberated much on it, and I believe this is a good, robust document for your board to approve today. Accordingly, Tabitha Miller, Assistant CAO slash Chief Financial Officer slash Interim Assistant Auditor Controller, wearing many different hats, is here today to present the final budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to go ahead and get started here at the presentation because I know we're moving forward. So this is the second slide, and I don't really need to go into any of the details. You've seen this information before. It's really just an outline of the steps that we've taken over what accounts for about a six-and-a-half-month period of time. And while we are a little later in adopting the budget this year, this isn't so abnormal. Typically, we start midterm a little bit earlier. It usually is a five-to-six-month process, and I just want to acknowledge the time that goes into it. So you've seen this slide before. This is a slight modification because we had a little bit of an increase in the overall expenditure budget of about $900,000. I will tell you, that's a net of many things. So it's, some expenses went up, some other uses went down. But it gives you a pretty good overview. It really has not changed that much as far as the percentages. When I looked at it, it was almost identical to what you had seen before. 47% of our budget is Health and Human Services. That's exactly the same as it was before. Public Works is 21%. Law and Justice, 19%. General Government is 7%. Planning a Building is 5%. And education and agriculture is 1%. I didn't move that forward, but that's fine. The next slide, I'm going to spend just a few minutes on this one. And the general fund is really where you did a lot of work during the public hearings. And this is, I'm not sure why that keeps moving forward. No, we're moving. But it is a, you know, a $571 million budget. So anyways, the general fund highlights, these numbers have changed again a little bit, just like the other ones have. In total, revenues and other financing sources equals $206 million, $206.3 million. The same thing when you add the expenditures with the other financing uses. I'm going to spend just a minute talking a little bit about that expenditure number of $193.7 million. It is a net increase over what you adopted in June of $2.3 million. And again, it's really a reflection of many of the decisions that were made during the budget hearings and reflected in the attachments to the budget that were included in the packet. If you'll remember, if you looked at Attachment B, you'll see that you, we added $1,376,711 of additional general fund request. We added a Measure Z item for the District Attorney's Office of $273,508. And then we also made the decision to fund about $1 million, just a little under $1 million, $1.2 million in additional expenses for the Auditor Controller's Office. So really, those are just changes that, you know, you spent a lot of time going through, a lot of effort went into looking at those and reviewing those. And I wanted to acknowledge that. So next, I'm going to move on to an item that we have not presented to you for a to you for a while, and that's the estimated beginning General Fund fund balance. You can see that it's $24.7 million. I will caveat this, that this is on the conservative side. I feel comfortable with that number. And the reason that we're being conservative at this point in time is really two things that came out of the presentation by our outside auditor a week ago. One is that we are still closing transactions. We know that we are trying to catch up with year 2021 and 2122 as far as closing the books, and we've still got a few outstanding transactions there. But it's also one of the other important things that they pointed out, which is the account reconciliations. And that's where we find those big posting errors, the $18.2 million that was, you know, incorrectly added. And that's why we're really trying to look at that fund balance number and bring you something that, if anything, it will go up, not go down. I'm going to drop you to the second line from the bottom, which is the white one. Total use of fund balance for the General Fund for this fiscal year is projected at $13.3 million. Typically, I would say this is a large number, but I think if we go through the items above that and talk about where you're using those funds, a lot of it is really setting aside money for resiliency, and we've talked about this throughout the budget process. You've set aside $5 million in general reserves. That's money that's being set aside for a rainy day or for the emergency funds. This will match the $5.6 million that you already have in there, bringing that to $10.6 million. Just to let you know, our goal is $17.6 million. So we still have some room to grow, but we've made some pretty significant process, significant progress in establishing sort of those outside reserves. We are using all of the Measure Z remaining balances, so all of the roll-forwards, all of the fund balance, that's $5.5 million. You set aside originally the $2.5 million in the recommended budget in June. We used $1.2 million for the Auditor Controller's additional expenses, and we've still got $1.3 million. That gives you some flexibility through the rest of the fiscal year as far as additional budget requests. And then there's one-time expenses of $1.5 million being funded out of that $13.3 million. And I point this out because those are things that can easily be adjusted next year if you need to reduce them. And in total, you have about $1.8 million in one-time additional funding requests. So that's something else that's not ongoing. And at the end of the day, we're looking at, if we spend everything that's been budgeted, which rarely, if ever happens, you'll have an ending fund balance of $11.4 million. These are just selected highlights. These are a few of the items that I wanted to ensure that the board was aware that were incorporated into the budget that's before you for adoption today. We do have that $273,000 increase in Measure Z ongoing funding, and that's for three crime analysts and one IT technician, and that's for the additional digital evidence support. It is a partial year because we're already three months into the year. We've got $7,000 for funding for Human Rights Commission. This was added during the budget hearings. It's proposed to be $2,000 for ongoing operating expenses and $5,000 for ongoing anti-human trafficking projects and programs. $25,000 increase in travel and mileage budget, that's $5,000 each supervisor. We've got the $15,000 additional supplement to match the private donation to redo the animal shelter roof. We did move $300,000, actually, this is a little bit. We added $300,000 to ARPA to cover the cost overrun of the brush cutters that were funded out of Measure Z originally. And then we also reduced the road fund Measure Z contribution by 160, but matched it with ARPA funding. We were able to continue to add a $3.5 million contribution to the road fund's deficit, and that leaves us with about $550,000 in remaining ARPA funds. So that's something else you can consider as we move forward. And again, we've used all of our Measure Z, or at least allocated all of the Measure Z funds at this point in time. One other item, just to keep in the forefront, is these are staffing costs that we are funding out of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, and it's about just under $5.2 million. And this is, and I've said this, and I just want to make sure we're clear, this is one-time funding that we're funding ongoing expenses. So it is the area that we'll need to focus on, making sure that we fill that hole in our revenues in the next budget cycle. And again, it's just under 50 employees, so that is pretty significant, though, that we're able to maintain employment. This is just kind of the few things that I wanted to let the board know that we will continue or bring back to you. The first one is that you had passed on funding for the veterans' facilities with the idea that you wanted to look at this holistically, all of the organizations, and come up with a fair and equitable solution. We also talked briefly about setting up a county budget committee, and we'll bring that back to you with some recommendations and some thoughts on how you might want to go about that. We will continue to provide you updates on the American Rescue Plan Act funding, the programs and possibilities that you may want to consider for future funding. And then just a reminder, we're only a few months from starting our next budget cycle, which will be in late January or early February, when we bring you the mid-year budget. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tabitha. Any questions? Supervisor Bushnell?
I don't specifically have a question, but I do want to make a comment that I think, I know that with our discussion two weeks ago, you've incorporated everything we asked and brought that back to us, and I appreciate that and want to thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
And I notice our District Attorney-elect is here to make sure she gets all her money, so I appreciate that. Look at that look. But anyway, no, I appreciate everything on this. It's nice to get a budget in a somewhat timely manner, and all the work you've done on it. I mean, there's things on here that, and I've got to ask, the $443,000 of IRS liens, will this be the last surprise we have?
I don't know that I can say that. It goes back to...
Just like Christmas. Keeps ungiven. Okay, thank you.
We have those account reconciliations that we have to finish before we can make any.
Our Groundhog Day.
All right. Supervisor Madron, did you have any, I didn't see your hand up, but I thought I'd ask you if you have anything you wanted to add.
Just incredible thanks to Tabitha and all the staff for their hard work on this, and for the board all working so well. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Wilson?
I am happy to make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. So we're going to go to the public comment. If you're listening online, please press star nine to raise your hand. We'll go to those who are in the public with us first. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go to those in the public. And we have one hand up, and that is 7108. So press star six to unmute.
Yes, I just have one question. I don't know if you can answer. Is the Garvaville Veterans Hall rebuilt? Is it in the budget? I know that tearing it down is, but there's no questions of whether the rebuild in the budget, in this budget, or it's going to be a year or two down the line. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. And I see no other hands up or even numbers, so we'll go back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell, did you want to handle that one?
I do, thank you. Thanks, Bonnie, for the question. I'm happy to have that discussion with you anytime, as I said before. And if you will reach out to me, I can update you. Thanks.
All right, yes, CAO Hayes?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Before we close out, I just want to show a ton of appreciation for Tabitha and all of the CAO's budget team and across the whole organization. This year in particular has been a very difficult budget year for all of us, and so I'm just really grateful for all the time that's put in and the patience that departments have had with us as we work through this.
I think we can all echo that.
Yeah, let's get done on a 40-hour report.
All right, I guess we're ready to vote. Nikki?
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, four.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you for flexibility, Tabitha. So next, we're going to go into our 11 o'clock here, time-set items, which are all closed session. And so for that, I'd like to ask our interim CA, what are, you know, one of these days I'll get this, I just like to call you Scott, but interim County Council, Miles, please.
Thank you, Chair Bass. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8 to grant authority to its negotiators regarding the price and terms of payment for the purchase of real property located at 1017 Fourth Street, Eureka, California, 95501, Assessor Parcel Number 001-174-006. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and E3 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case regarding the notice of intent to pursue civil litigation against Humboldt County Departments et al. submitted by Alan McCloskey. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and E1 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case. And finally, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of North Coast Environmental Center et al. versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2100518.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone who'd like to comment on these items in public? I see no one coming forward. And on the phone, online, I see no hands up. All right, so with that, we're going to go into closed session, and then we'll be back at 1:30. Is that our next time set, looks like? All right, so we'll be back at 1:30 and hopefully have a report out. All right, so here we go. Welcome to our afternoon session. I'd like to ask interim County Council, Miles, if there's a report out of closed session.
Thank you, Chair Bass. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items L1 through L4.
All right, thank you. So next, we'll go to our 1:30 time set. Comes to us by DHHS, and it's a presentation on the DHHS services, I can't even talk, Human Services, Housing and Homeless Services. Welcome, Robert and Connie.
Thank you. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. Nikki, do you have our PowerPoint?
Yes. You want the PowerPoint? You have both, a PDF and a PowerPoint. Are they the same? They're the same, so I'll bring up the PowerPoint.
That would be great. Oh, and I need the...
Yeah.
So, good afternoon. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'm here with Robert Ward. Robert is the Housing Coordinator for DHHS, and he's also the Administrator for the Continuum of Care, which is the HHC for the county. So today, we are going to talk about the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition's 2022 Point in Time Count. We're also going to talk a little bit about our Housing and Homeless Programs within DHHS and talk a little bit about what's up and coming next. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Robert so that he can go through the Point in Time Count.
All right, thank you very much, Connie. Thank you, Connie. All right. So we did the Point in Time Count in January. It was the early morning of January 26th. So first of all, you know, what is homelessness? Historically, it meant without a place, without a roof. There's HUD's definition, which is quite specific, and the Department of Education definition, which is quite broad. The HUD definition, by the way, for the purposes of the Point in Time Count, are people living in a place not meant for human habitation, as well as people in emergency shelters and transitional housing. There's been various national estimates of homelessness over the years, so here's some historical context. We really saw the numbers jump up around 1980, which sort of spurred the country to start trying to estimate the numbers. So how do we know how many people are experiencing homelessness at any given time? There's the Point in Time Count. There's a couple different ways to do Point in Time Counts, and we've been doing the Blitz method both in 2019 and in 2022, which is where you try and get enough volunteers together to cover the entire territory of the county and, you know, put eyeballs on, you know, who's out there and collect data on their characteristics. There's also probability-based surveys. Los Angeles uses those. And we use the Homeless Management Information System for those shelters and transitional housing projects that participate to count the folks that are in there. So who do we miss? There are people that could be literally homeless the day before the count or the day after the count, and we can't include them, per the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development rules. There's also couch surfers, people who are unstably doubled up, who do meet certain definitions of homelessness, but not the one that we use for the Point in Time Count. There are carefully hidden people, especially in a place like Humboldt County. We know it can be difficult to find everybody that's in the hills and the woods. And then there are people in places that counters have been told not to go. So we don't tell the counters to go onto private property, for example. The instructions are to cover every public street, parks, places with public access. So here are our totals over the years, going back to 2009. You know, there was a big jump between 2017 and 2019. It was largely driven by a change in the methodology. We used to use a service-based count. Problem with that is you can only count people who agree to talk to you and who tell you, yes, I was in a place not meant for habitation on the night of the count, and then you can proceed with the survey. So we know, since doing the Blitz count, there's a lot of people that will not agree to answer any questions whatsoever, and we're able to count them using the Blitz method. So we saw a slight decrease between 2019 and 2022, 1702 down to 1656. 1309, we recently completed the data validation process with HUD, and this has dropped just slightly to 1648 because of a small change in the sheltered count. Some data were corrected. 1309 unsheltered, that's down from 1402, and 339 sheltered, up from 300. Those 746 people are estimated to be chronically homeless. That is a very significant increase since 2019. A large majority of the chronically homeless folks were unsheltered. Chronic homelessness, by the way, the head of household must have a qualifying disability. They need to have been on the streets or in shelters for at least 12 months out of the last 36 months. We also saw increases of people reporting serious mental illness and substance use disorders. This is defined a bit differently than how we use it to qualify people for mental health services, but we ask, do they have a disability that impairs your ability to hold a job or live independently? So we estimated 48 percent with a mental health disability of the adults. We don't ask the state of children, by the way, and 49 percent...
Supervisor Bone has a question for you.
Yes.
I don't know what the margin of error on any of the things, but on those two responses, 48 and 49, you know, there's crossover, though, that 40 percent of those with mental health disabilities also had substance. Is that right? Or do you have that number? Or is that coming? Did I jump the gun?
I did run that number, and it was lower than I expected, and I apologize. I don't have a graph on that in this presentation, but I can get that to you. But it was, you know, I want to say between 200 and 300 reported both. So it was lower than expected. But we know these things are underreported when you survey people, so it's very difficult to estimate. Now, when people are staying in the shelters and transitional housing projects that use the Homeless Management Information System, we see much higher reliability. But when you have a lot of people that refuse to even talk to you, then you have to estimate the percentage that have mental illness or substance use disorder based on the survey rec... percentage that have mental illness or substance use disorder based on the survey responses that you get. And to get higher quality data on that, we need a higher response rate, and it could be the people that have the most severe needs around this or least likely to respond to the survey.
Supervisor Bone?
And you're probably going to come to this. Is that what we gave a rather large contract to co-op Humboldt or Cooperation Humboldt, I think? Wasn't it, you know, they needed bicycles to get out to talk to the homeless? Was that part of this? Is this to help validate this, or was that just another, this is how many we got?
We've contracted with several street outreach providers over the past year and a half, Cooperation Humboldt among them, also SoHumb Housing Opportunities, the City of Eureka also has an ESG street outreach. Anyway, they were all instrumental in helping with the count, definitely including Cooperation Humboldt. SoHumb Housing Opportunities was key in the southern Humboldt area. Okay, so then we'll go into, we have, I keep going, I'm going forward, sorry. All right. So in families with children, out of that 1648, only 81 were part of a household that included at least one adult and one child. 28 families, 78% of them were sheltered. It's sort of a flip, you know, mirror image of what we see with the chronically homeless data and the single adults. Although 10 families consisting of 30 members were chronically homeless. Adults in households with no children, this is the bulk of the count, 1562, that's 94% of the total count. 83% of them were unsheltered, which is down 7% from 2019, and 46% were chronically homeless. Households with only children, we only had five children, unaccompanied children, they were all sheltered, and one was chronically homeless. Veterans, we saw a very large increase in the number of veterans, but this was due to an error in the 2019 count. We essentially failed to extrapolate that issue I was talking about before, where a lot of people refused to answer the questions. The 66 number in 2019 were only the people that we talked to who agreed to be surveyed, and that's how we got to 66. This year, we extrapolated, which is what we should have done in 2019, and we're seeing a big increase. They are 65% unsheltered. Higher sheltered rates with veterans, probably because of the nation's finest programs. We had 50 unaccompanied youth aged 18 to 24. You can add the five unaccompanied minors that I mentioned, and you get 55 total youth households, 55 individuals. The youth 18 to 24 are, three-quarters of them are unsheltered. And, let's see, five of them were chronically homeless, much lower rates of chronic homelessness in the youth, at least in our PIT data. So then we're getting asked about, we're getting asked to identify racial disparities in the prevalence of homelessness and the provision of homeless services, so I thought it would give you some information on that. First, you have to start, you know, what are you going to compare it to? So these are the American Community Survey estimates for Humboldt County. It's 82.6% white. I do have a little blurb up there. So earlier this year, there were a lot of news stories about how Sacramento is now exceeding San Francisco in terms of both the total number of people experiencing homelessness and the per capita rate. So I thought I'd see how we compare, and it was about double the rate in Sacramento. It's quite high per capita. I've heard some people say that this is the highest per capita rate of homelessness in the country. We don't actually know that, because a lot of counties don't have county-level data. They're part of multiple county COCs, but we could be. It's quite high, that's for sure. So we can compare the demographics of the county to the demographics of people experiencing homelessness, and we notice a large disparity with Black and African-Americans. 3.3% of the homeless population was Black. The other groups are largely in line with what we see in the general population. Families with children, much more diverse than the general homeless population or the general population of Humboldt County, and I'm told we see that in other HHS programs as well. And then the demographics of adults in households with no children, this largely tracks with what you see in the full count, because this is the bulk of the count, adults with no children. And again, we see a large disparity with Black or African-American. Households with only children, this is such a small sample size, it's hard to draw any conclusions from it. Demographics of veterans, it's here. And the youth, we're kind of surprised by how high the white percentage was here. And here we have the geographic distribution across the county. This was done by zip code, so your Eureka number there does include portions of the peninsula at 498. It's not the city limits of Eureka. We saw, by the way, just large concentrations around the Humboldt Bay Area, in southern Humboldt, and eastern Humboldt, the Highway 96 entire area there. Emergency shelters, here we can see all of the emergency shelter projects that we have in the count for January 25th. The Eureka Rescue Mission is a large portion of our shelter residents. And the four transitional housing projects, we only have transitional housing at this point for youth, for families with children, and for veterans. So transitional housing in this context has a very specific definition. These are projects where people have a lease that must end in two years or less, cannot be extended by the project operator. So it's not, for example, clean and sober houses. And that's it for my PIT count presentation.
Are there questions from your Board around the PIT count?
Let me see, I did want to say we have both Supervisors Madron and Wilson are with us on the Zoom, so Nikki, are there hands up? I don't see any hands up. Nope, apparently not at this time.
They can always ask later, too, of course.
We know where to find you.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to the Housing and Homeless Program piece. Nikki, if you could put that back up?
Do you know what slide? Is it on?
26.
Okay, perfect.
And I can just start by setting the stage here and maybe dispel some misconceptions about what we do. DHHS does not own housing units. We also do not place people into housing. We rely on private landlords and assist clients to apply for available housing units. DHHS housing programs serve specific safety net populations, such as people with serious and persistent mental illness, families who qualify for CalWorks, families involved in child welfare services, and people living with HIV and AIDS.
Is that the right one? Oh, sorry. Is that the right most slide?
No, I think you're going to, oh, I guess we can start right here. That'll be just fine.
Okay.
The DHHS role in housing and homelessness has increased dramatically in the last seven years. For years, we only had limited rental assistance for families and people living with HIV. Today, we operate several housing programs for specific safety net populations listed here, and we're going to highlight just a few of those today and are happy to provide you with additional details on any of those programs. And I guess I should have noted that we do have a couple of our program staff on Zoom if we have questions that we can't answer. Oh, tricky. So our journey started with creating permanent supportive housing units for people with serious mental illness. In 2015, DHHS partnered with Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation to complete our first permanent supportive housing project, that's Arcade Bay Crossing, with 15 units dedicated to persons with serious mental illness. This was followed by the Lodge for Seniors in Bayview Heights in Eureka and River Bluff in Riedel. Eureka, with this month's completion of Pine Hill Village in Eureka, we now have a total of 94 units dedicated to people with serious mental illness. The DHHS tenant selection team uses emergency rooms, simprovirans, and jail data to help prioritize the most vulnerable for the next available unit. This does have additional benefit of cross-system savings to hospitals and the jail.
Connie, are all those, sorry, through the chair, are all those units are full?
Yes.
Yeah. What's the turnover in those units?
We'd have to rub some numbers on that and get back to you, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
We can find that out.
Okay, thank you.
So also around 2015, DHHS created the HOME unit. HOME is our largest housing program and is funded by a combination of resources, including realignment, MHSA, HUD, and state housing grants such as HEEP, KESH, and HAP. HOME works to find and assist people experience homelessness with collecting everything they need to apply for housing and remained housed. Supervisor Bone, you asked what the cost for staff of this program is, and I wanted to let you know that we budgeted approximately $3 million this year for this program.
Supervisor Bone?
That's for the 94 beds that are being taken now and the operation of those, or is that for, applied to the 1,600 that are out there, too?
That's for the 94 beds and the additional, and the work, I think I'm coming up on the other part of this conversation right here. In addition to the 94 units of permanent supportive housing, we work with just under 100 local landlords and property management companies to help clients secure their housing. So we receive, we do receive positive feedback from landlords, but there is a number of times that folks get engaged in order to collect all of the information needed to even apply for applications. So far, HOME has assisted 269 people with serious and persistent mental illness, successfully obtaining housing. We track their utilization of services such as simprovirans, jail, and local ER admissions before and after they obtain housing. This is some of the data. There are benefits to the system and, more importantly, benefits to the individual. Clients report increased safety and mental wellness and health after being housed. Oh, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. Oh, it is? My goodness. Sorry about that. At any given time, HOME is working with about 100 individuals, helping them obtain their documents, apply for benefits, housing vouchers, anything they need to apply for housing. Rental subsidies are often supported by grants or MHSA funding until they can transition to a HUD housing voucher. HOME has successfully transitioned 80% of county rental subsidies for this population to HUD vouchers. As we know, there is a waitlist for HUD voucher units. In addition to HOME, we have the CalWorks Housing Support Program to assist families eligible to CalWorks experiencing or at risk of homelessness. For older adults, the fastest-growing segment of homeless across the country, we have a new HomeSafe program through our Adult Protective Services. Deep cleaning and utility expenses are the most common interventions, and we are working to secure additional services to address hoarding and other issues. Another program is Bringing Families Home. It's an innovative partnership between Child Welfare, the Yurok Tribe, Open Door, Family Resource Centers, DANCO, and many others. DANCO built the 80-unit Phyllis Rex Townhouses in Samoa. DHHS and the Yurok Tribe help homeless and housing insecure families involved in the child welfare system. Apply for these units and maintain stable housing. Housing Disability Assistance Action Program began as a state pilot and is now an ongoing program. This population is often receiving general relief. Our staff assists them with applying for disability benefits and securing housing. Public Health has two housing support programs, one to help prevent homelessness and one to house people living with HIV and AIDS. HOPWA began in 1992. It's our longest-serving housing program and one of the only ones with an ongoing federal funding source. It's important to know that DHHS doesn't do this work alone. DHHS programs are part of a continuum of care. Community-based programs serve many populations that DHHS programs cannot. These community-based organizations serve various populations experiencing homelessness across the county with permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency shelters, street outreach, homeless prevention, and case management programs. We help administer state and federal grants to assist them in this work. In the past few years, we've administered 30 contracts across 15 community partners and seven funding sources, most on behalf of the HHHC totaling more than $5.5 million to provide homeless and housing support services in every region of the county. Here's a list of our partners. Many of the people we and our community partners work with either have zero income or rely on disability benefits. For a person on disability benefits, an affordable rent would be about $312 a month. That's why we work hard to help people obtain federal housing vouchers. As we all know, there are not enough housing units affordable to our clients. The solution to homelessness is housing, of course. In addition to working with developers to build permanent supportive housing units like Pine Hill Village and dedicated units like the Samoa Bringing Families Home Program, your Board authorized DHHS to work with Providence Supportive Housing on a 42-unit Home Key Project. Providence has named it the Mother Bernard House, and they are now in the process of converting the Humboldt Inn on 4th Street into housing. There have been three additional Home Key Projects awarded in the county that together aim to dedicate more than 150 additional units for people experiencing homelessness. And the Eureka Housing Authority is looking to increase their stock from 196 to 350 units over the next 10 years. Also, we know it's not very close, it's not just very low-income housing, we need workforce housing. Local healthcare CEOs, including myself, are actively advocating for and even building workforce housing. We can't recruit doctors if medical assistants can't find housing. Lastly, I'd like to briefly introduce you to our latest project, the Navigation Center. You'll be You'll be hearing a lot more about this in the months ahead. I'll be offering a full presentation to your board in the coming months. For now, just a high-level overview, DHHS is working with the City of Eureka to develop a central location for people experiencing homelessness to have respite during the day and be connected to our programs and community resources to obtain permanent housing. There's much more to come on this project. We're also working with Redwoods Rural in Southern Humboldt on options to provide a similar service. I mention it here because we are constantly working with our cities and partners to build capacity and services and supports to meet the needs of our community. This work continues to evolve, is informed by data, and what our staff is seeing on the streets. With that, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. That was a great presentation. It really gives a good overview of everything in one spot.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone, did you have?
No.
No? Any questions? Supervisor Bushnell?
No. I talk with Connie a lot, and the struggles are to find areas that are, you know, can service housing units, and especially in the unincorporated areas like mine. We, you know, we've really struggled in the Southern Humboldt area, and we have a large population of houseless folks there. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. You're welcome. What, Nikki?
I was just letting you know Supervisor Wilson has a stand-up.
Okay, thanks. I was gonna say, I was looking for, Madrone does not, Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I just want to thank staff for this presentation, but more than that, the efforts with relationship to the pit count, and then also with just all the services and all the integration and all the coordination, and then the evaluation of these services, and then the reevaluation of them on a constant basis to try and, you know, seek the most efficiency and just the, you know, the most service we can get, and the truthful and realistic explanation of a lot of the challenges that we have. I think that's, I just wanted to thank them for all of that. It was very interesting, this morning, there was a podcast by, New York Times does think this, a podcast every day called The Daily, and today's was about the drop in child poverty rates over the last decade or so, and actually even longer than that, but there's been an even bigger drop just recently, and that has to do with earned income tax credits. It basically is just talking about how the ability for, it's really the income gap that drives a lot of this, you know, issue and what we're, you know, and these, all these responses and all of the conversation that we have around this is a continued effort to, you know, to, to, we have differentiations and differences on strategy, but all we're trying to all do is get everyone housed and have everyone fed as best we can, and we're doing that within a broken system in an overall way. And I just wanted to, like, reiterate that every chance we get from, you know, we're always looking inward with all these resources, but we should always be pushing outward in terms of, like, changing fundamentally the systemic issues that we're having to respond to. And with that, again, I just want to thank staff for all these efforts and their continued communication on this.
All right, thank you Supervisor Wilson. I think we're gonna go to public comment right now. We're gonna go to those who are in the audience first and then to the phone. If you happen to be on the phone or you wish to call in, you should call in now and press star nine so that we know you are there. Is there anyone that is here in person that wants to comment on this item?
It was wonderful.
Thank you, we'll take that. Okay. And Janelle, welcome.
Yeah. Thank you, that was a wonderful presentation. And the work that is being done is phenomenal, and I applaud everybody for what they're doing. I do however, want to remind you that there are many, many people that do not qualify for the services. They do not have mental health issues. Even those that have mental health issues and substance use issues, the numbers exceed the demand right now. And so what I have been talking about is what do we do in the meantime? And I would like to say that shelters, day shelters, night shelters, well, they are good and we have them. Betty Quinn, Betty Quinn Shin has a day center and night shelters, all the, those services, those are great, but we have what we need. What people need is a place to live. Housing First says, "Don't use shelters, provide people a place to live." Once people have a place to live, Housing First's theory and practice has shown that once people have a place to live, those, the problems of substance abuse and mental illness decrease. They demand fewer services. And that's why I've been advocating for a campground. And so I am here again advocating for a campground, and I thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. And I see no one else from the public here. Also, there are no hands up online, so we'll go back to the board. And Supervisor Madrone, I believe your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
We've lost you.
You accidentally hit me again.
I'm here, there we go. How's that? Sorry about that. First of all, thank you to the staff, Connie Beck and her entire team, as well as the sheriff and the deputies and everybody out there in the community and volunteer groups, the folks that work on the Homeless Solutions Committee. There are so many people that are working on so many different elements, angles, and parts to this whole puzzle to try and bring help, to try and create better services to help people. So I guess my big plea is really to the community. We see over and over again, I'm sure as board members, we all get a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls from people that are just really frustrated with all the various encampments, whether it be the one there on whatever that street is, V Street, that was cleared out the other day, much like Devil's Playground years ago in Eureka. And then people spread out in other wooded areas all over the communities, whether it's Southern Humboldt or McKinleyville or Weller Creek or wherever. And we're not really solving the problem, we're just spreading it around further and making it even more difficult to provide services to people. We have an emergency shelter declaration, we now have an ordinance to back that up that lays out how we can do sanctioned campgrounds, sanctioned parking areas for overnight, and all these other things. But every time we bring these ideas forward in our communities, people push back, as they say in the NIMBY situation, and people don't want it, anywhere near them, anywhere near their neighborhoods. And so I'm not sure how the community thinks we're ever gonna solve these problems if we aren't able to have more facilities and more options for short-term solutions like campgrounds and parking, as well as long-term solutions of housing, which I believe, you know, the ADU we worked on today, the housing element, there's so many other pieces to this that we're working on, but it's really gonna take the community as a whole to recognize that there is no perfect solution here, and if we as a community continue to block steps to try and create some options, these problems are gonna continue to exist and grow and become an even worse problem. And I would submit to the community and to us that the cost of not doing something, the cost of literally not getting these camps and stuff parking and other things together is actually costing us far greater impact and far more money as taxpayers and as a community. So I just, my plea is to the community to really dig deep into your hearts and think about how we can be more tolerant of making these things happen. And I've often talked with people about, okay, you've got these camps in the neighborhood in some wooded area, but they're completely uncoordinated and sanctioned, no sanitation. What if we created a sanctioned camp nearby that neighborhood that had toilet facilities, shower facilities, garbage facilities, and people coming in on a daily basis to provide services, to help people get in the programs and other things, which if they're in a safe place that's sanctioned, then we can try and help bring services to those that want them. Wouldn't that be a better situation for neighborhoods than having all these unsanctioned things going on all over the place? I realize it's not ideal, it would be a big impact, but I don't know how else we're gonna solve this problem if we don't dig deep and start all recognizing that we're gonna have to tolerate and work towards some very innovative and creative solutions. And there are a lot of people in this community, like AHA and many, many others, that are just really trying hard to bring services and help out. So I just, I really, I'm speaking to the community here, I guess, to say, can we really start thinking about how we incrementally make things better? And that's gonna have to be a deep dig on all of our parts to make that happen. So it's really a plea for help, because I know when we get these emails and phone calls, I'm like, so what am I supposed to do here? You know, I go out on the trashpashes, we clean up areas all the time, but they're the same areas over and over again. And it is true that there are many people who don't want help or aren't ready for the help, but there are many that are ready, that are just begging for a help up, not a handout, but a help up. And so, you know, I am part of the problem in that I think we all have to do more to try and help solve this. But again, thank you Connie, thank you staff for all the things that you do to try and help. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I think we've heard from everyone. Do we have a motion to accept the presentation?
I'll make a motion that we accept the presentation, and thank you to the DHH staff.
Definitely, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is that Wilson? Okay.
Yeah?
It's the voice in the sky. All right, I think we're ready to vote, Nikki.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone? Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you guys. So we'll move on to our 2 o'clock time set, which comes to us from Public Works, and it's the approval of McKay Community Forest Trail Plan and Forest Stewardship Plan. And welcome Hank.
Good afternoon, Hank Seaman, Public Works Deputy Director, here to talk about the McKay Community Forest, and I have a set of slides to show. Great, thank you Nikki. I'm part of the Public Works team that's been working to develop the McKay Community Forest along with Bob Vogt and Mike Orr, the County Park Supervisor. So the McKay Community Forest is shown in red there. Historically, that forest land was part of the larger McKay tract within the Ryan Creek watershed southeast of Eureka, and that forest land was owned by Green Diamond and then previously Simpson, Georgia Pacific, Louisiana Pacific, and then going back to the late 19th century, McKay and Company. And this forest land, right along the urban interface, has been, was the subject of discussion about its future use going back to the 1990s. And then probably right around 2010, as the county's general plan was being updated, Green Diamond came forward with the Trust for Public Land, and they had a proposal to sell a portion of the McKay tract to the county to form a community forest, and then also to establish a conservation easement on the rest of their property. So the county did due diligence and public engagement, and then in 2014, your board approved an acquisition of almost 1,000 acres, and then in 2020, you approved an acquisition of almost 200 acres. So currently, we have just under 1,200 acres. This has been a big undertaking, and just want to acknowledge Neil Ewald, Gary Reiner Son, Greg Templeton with Green Diamond, they've all retired, but they had a big role to play, and then especially Craig Compton with Green Diamond. Craig, I think it was really Craig's idea in the beginning, and Craig did a lot of heavy lifting behind the scenes to make this possible. So the community forest has a very irregular boundary. These are just some photos to give you a sense of the location. It's generally located between Ryan Creek and the urban interface. This is the southern portion that is quite a bit wider, and then this shows the northern portion where it gets narrow. And you can see it's really in Eureka's backyard, and, you know, over many years, people in Eureka have used this property, they've developed a relationship with it, and this is just a great development for the county to work with, the community to make it publicly accessible for more people. In 2019, we released a draft trail plan, and the trail plan focused on access points and the proposed trail network. The access points were the most challenging part, and they continue to be a challenge, and that's largely why progress has taken time. We want the community forest to be accessible to a wide range of users, and that means developing a wide range of trails, because not all trails are equal. We've did a lot of work to look at the existing roads and trails and trying to integrate a trail system with those where appropriate. Some trails that are social trails that have developed over time are really not in their best location, they're not sustainable, and then we also need to develop some new trails that are properly located, properly built for sustainability. We have the opportunity, because of the topography, there's certain areas where there's generally flat ground, that we can develop accessible trails, and by that I mean trails that meet standards for people with wheelchairs and mobility devices. If they're, if they're generally flat and they have a firm and stable surface, those can be accessible to people with mobility devices. And so that's one of the priorities for the trail network is to create that opportunity. Trail building will really depend on a lot of volunteer efforts. There's the established program of the Volunteer Trail Stewards. The Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association has a really strong track record of developing mountain bike trails, and both groups are offering and ready to partner with the county. When we released the draft trail plan, we received 85 comments. The trail plan generated a lot of interest. 50 of those comments related to mountain bike trails, and we heard from the mountain bike community, you know, if you look at the board of the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association, it's a lot of parents and professionals, and they talked about how mountain bike trails really provide an opportunity for youth, and also how it provides quality of life that helps attract professionals, helps retain young people who are skilled. So just a lot of social values of having good outdoor activities really close to home. And one of the exciting things about the McKay Community Forest is that we've got land that will be suitable for trails that, especially for mountain bike trails, that will be beginner and intermediate trails, and so that really fits within a spectrum locally, you know. Blue Lake has some advanced trails, Arcata has some intermediate and advanced trails, and we'll be able to fill a niche of having some beginner and intermediate trails as well as advanced. And so that's really gonna, I think, unleash a lot of interest in mountain biking in the greater Eureka area. We developed an environmental study for compliance with California Environmental Quality Act, and that was circulated for public review. We did an initial version back in 2020, and then we made revisions and recirculated that for public review. We identified mitigation measures that will be incorporated into the project to ensure that impacts are not significant, and so those are And so those are listed there. We also developed a Forest Stewardship Plan. The Forest Stewardship Plan is a companion to the trail plan. The Forest Stewardship Plan focuses on other aspects of forest management, including timber harvest, habitat restoration, and addressing wildfire risk. We worked with the firm BBW and Associates and SHN Consulting to develop this plan. And this really provides a guidance document for the next 10 to 15 years. This plan is also a companion to the Non-Industrial Timber Management Plan. So whereas the Forest Stewardship Plan is non-mandatory and it's guidance, the Non-Industrial Timber Management Plan is a regulatory document. It demonstrates compliance with the state forest practice rules. And so that Non-Industrial Timber Management Plan, a draft, has been submitted to CAL FIRE and the reviewing state agencies. And we received initial comments, and we're currently revising that. We worked with Redwood Community Action Agency on outreach for the stewardship plan. We did receive 16 comments. You know, most of them were focused on recreation. So the, I think the forestry part of the stewardship plan was not controversial. Some of those comments included just the importance of having hiking trails, hiking-only trails for people older in age, for people with children, and people with dogs. Some of the comments also encouraged the county to consider a name change for the community forest. I'd like to talk just briefly about forest management. You know, we're fortunate to have the model of the City of Arcata's community forest. You know, the City of Arcata, for decades, has implemented a program where they have a working forest, and the revenues from the working forest are reinvested in the forest. And then, you know, they've also, at times, generated surplus that they've been able to use to invest in other community assets. So the Forest Stewardship Plan talks about principles of ecological forest management. And that's an overall approach that looks at the entire ecosystem of the forest, not just the trees, and focuses on the plant communities and the wildlife and the landscapes and the natural processes. Really focuses on science and monitoring and having data to inform decisions and planning, and having an overall goal of trying to sustain the integrity of the ecosystem. And also being aware of reducing risks. And so we need to be aware of those and work to manage those and reduce them. The plan also talks about existing conditions. You know, based on the historic management of that property, the forest is mostly uniform, mostly young, even-aged trees with low structural diversity. So the majority of the forest, an example shown on the right there, are relatively young, third-growth trees, you know, 25 to 45 years old. There's a high stem density, there's dead trees that have been shaded out, and there's, you know, very little understory vegetation due to the shading. That's the, about three-fourths of the forest is in that condition. And then approximately 12% is our older stands, you know, 85 up to 115 years old. Those have larger trees, more understory vegetation, lower fuel loads. They still have a fairly low structural complexity. And then the remainder of the trees are really young, less than 25 years old. So the stewardship plan talks about how desired future conditions are to have a much more diverse forest with mixed-aged trees and more structural complexity. We want to grow larger, older trees, and that will help increase resilience to wildfire, climate change, increase diversity of species and habitat. And so we're proposing to implement uneven age management. So what that means is, you know, selecting trees in small groups for harvest. And this is an approach that will shift the trajectory of that forest over the next coming decades from even age to uneven age. And this harvest approach really emulates natural disturbance events. And it helps open up, create openings for, you know, for sunlight to penetrate the floor and to really promote more diverse understory vegetation. So we're envisioning performing harvests almost every year in an area, you know, in stands from 50 to 100 acres. And the proposed harvest rate would be approximately 20 to 40% of the standing volume of trees. So that means a retention of 60 to 80%. And the good news, you know, about forests is they grow. And so there's a growth rate over time. And we're proposing to harvest less than that growth rate, probably about 50 to 60% of that growth rate. So over time, there'll be an increase in biomass, an increase in standing volume. And then, you know, we'll be complying with the forest practice rules under our Non-Industrial Timber Management Plan. Once that plan is approved, it's really a lifetime plan unless something substantially changes. And then we develop a notice of timber operations for each entry. And what standard practice is that as you do a timber harvest, you take the opportunity to upgrade the logging roads that are in that stand and also controllable sediment discharge sites. We are fortunate to work with BBW on the Forest Stewardship Plan and our Non-Industrial Timber Management Plan. And that team includes Marc Andre. He worked for several years with City of Arcata. He's also the Vice Chair of the County Forestry Review Committee. And Arcata has practiced this model of community forestry and ecological forest management. You know, they've really reached a, what I would call a mature stage of community forestry, whereas McKay is really in a raw stage. And so McKay is today where Arcata probably was in the late 60s or early 70s. The Forest Stewardship Plan also identifies needs and opportunities for habitat restoration. Through our timber harvest, we want to work on increasing forest structure and complexity. There's also opportunities to do aquatic habitat restoration. And we already have a partnership with Redwood Community Action Agency. They received a grant to do a planning study for some off-channel habitat creation. And that project will be kicking off in just a few months. Really, the essence of community forestry is community involvement. And that gets expressed in two ways, or proposing in two ways. First is to develop partnerships with community organizations, you know, especially for trail building. So Volunteer Trail Stewards, Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association. We're open to other relationships. And, you know, this is a really great opportunity to foster those organizations. And these groups have really formed cohesion and they really become the fabric of our community by, you know, the work that they do means a lot, and it motivates them. And there's just tremendous interest. We've also had a lot of interest from businesses to donate tools and supplies. So we'd like to continue that work. And then we're proposing to form the McKay Community Forest Advisory Group. This would be a group of seven members that would advise the Public Works Department. We're proposing that three of those seats would be offered to City of Eureka, the Wiat tribe, and the Humboldt Trails Council. And then four seats would be at-large, where there would be an application process, and we would invite people to apply. And we would be looking to have diverse representation of different interests. And the purpose of the advisory group would be to make sure that Public Works is being responsive to the community, that we're on the right track, to help identify needs and opportunities, and to create a forum for feedback.
Supervisor Bone.
What were the first three seats, the set seats were going to be who?
City of Eureka, Wiat Tribe, and Humboldt Trails Council.
Okay, and I, I know, I don't want to expand it at all, but it'd be nice if you had some of the residents of Ridgewood and Cutton, one or two, that are actually calling me every day with questions. I don't get too many calls from the City of Eureka because it really doesn't interface with it at all. I want them to be a part of it. But I get a lot of calls from the Cutton area. I mean, we're going to solve one of them tomorrow with the park, with the parking lot opening up. But I'm just saying, it would be nice if some of the residents that are directly affected were involved with it rather than...
Supervisor Bushnell.
Would that be considered at-large? So at-large would be anywhere, is that correct?
At-large would be anyone. And I think we would certainly encourage neighboring residents to apply. And they certainly have important and unique interests. That would really be good to get their representation.
Do you, when will this be formed and how would anybody get information if they wanted it?
We're planning to release applications in November, and then we'll post those on the Community Forest website. And then the Public Works Director will do a selection in December, and then we'd like to have our first meeting in January. And then there'd be quarterly meetings, and those would be open to the public.
Thank you.
I'd like to wrap up by talking about public access points. Much of the perimeter of the community forest is landlocked, and access to public roads is very limited. Therefore, access points will need to be developed in phases. And we have developed a parking area, a dedicated parking area on North Ridge Road in Cutton. We had access to some grant funds that had a deadline, and so we took advantage of that, and we built that parking lot. We've maintained that gate closed until the board approved the trail plan and the SECA document. That parking area is ready to be opened, and there's a first set of trails that are still a work in progress. But we think that they're ready for public use. So the map on the left shows the location of the North Ridge parking area. The map on the right shows the proposed network of trails. This is a picture of the parking area. We hope there's an opportunity to develop a restroom in the future. And it'll take some work and some funding, but there could be an opportunity to annex this into the service area for Humboldt Community Services District and have a restroom with sanitation service. County Park staff have really taken pride in using Redwood to construct the structures for signs and for the signposts. We've developed a set of trail names to help people know where they are. But we want to show restraint and not oversign it, and let people have a sense of exploration and discovery as well. And we've developed some trail names and some signs for the first set of trails. And there's going to be lots of opportunity in the future as more trails are built to have a whole array of trail names. And we'll be looking forward to community input on that as well, probably through the advisory group. This is a picture of a historic logging road near the North Ridge parking area that can be used for a trail. And this is a picture of a trail a little deeper in the forest that's more of a single-track trail. There's a whole diversity of trails. Again, we'll be using existing logging roads. Some of the solstice trails that have been developed, we'll try to integrate those where they're appropriate. And then developing some, you know, well-designed, well-planned trails. And, you know, in many ways, the ideal trail really fits into the landscape and looks like it's always been there. And so that's one of the goals of trail building. And so pending approval of the SECA document today, Public Works proposes to open the North Ridge parking area this Thursday at noon. So I said that access points will need to be developed in phases, and really, we want multiple access points. We want to disperse the use in the community forest, not have it concentrated. Historically, Harris Street and Redwood Acres and Redwood Fields have been used to access the McKay tract. That was occurring long before the county acquired the property for the community forest. Harris Street, Redwood Acres, and Redwood Fields are not ready to be opened as official access points, so I just want to emphasize that point. This is a map showing, you know, the red outline is the boundary of the community forest. So this is just south of Redwood Acres and just east of Redwood Fields. And then Harris Street is shown right at the top. So this area has a lot of challenges. Parking along Harris Street is on-street, so it's, you know, at the curb. The property boundaries there are very confusing on the ground and not intuitive. And so there's a need for signage to really provide that clarity. The community forest property is narrow, and it's also confined by sensitive areas. Another important consideration here is that there's a really unique situation. There's a privately-owned residential property called an inholding that's situated within the community forest. So you can see that near the center of the photo. And the residents of that property access their home on logging roads off of Harris Street. Those logging roads, part of them are owned by Green Diamond, and part of them are owned by the county. And the residents have an easement to use those roads to access their property. This map shows the proposed trails in the vicinity of Redwood Acres and Redwood Fields. We've committed to create a trail that bypasses the inholding parcel. In order to do that, we need to kind of go up the hill, and we need to encroach onto the private property that's owned for the North McKay Ranch subdivision. So we've proposed an easement that would allow a trail, a bypass trail around the inholding to be built there. That proposed easement is incorporated into the proposed development agreement between the county and Kramer Properties that's advancing the North McKay Ranch subdivision. That development agreement is still pending, but it does contain a provision to provide that easement.
Supervisor Bone.
Would that be at the end of Redwood Street, then, are you talking about, or?
No, I'm talking about a trail easement that would allow connecting kind of the northern and the southern parts of the community forest, not connecting into the road network in Cutton. Those, the development agreement also has some proposed access points within the subdivision.
The one coming out of Redwood Fields.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is being used regularly now.
So, yeah. So there's a lot of lines on the map there. The logging road that comes off of Harris is called the R Line. And it is feasible to develop a separate and parallel trail, as shown in green there, that will allow the public to use trails off of the R Line. However, we did not find any feasible alternatives from using what's called the R1 road. And the R1 road starts at the bottom of the hill where there's two gates and then, well, one gate. And then it comes around and it leads to the inholding. But on one side, there's floodplain and wetlands, and on the other side, there's steep hillside with drainages. And so the trail plan proposes shared use of that road for almost half a mile and a number of provisions to address safety and compatibility. I should note that the residents of the inholding have opposed that proposal. And, you know, we've had discussions about that. We reached an impasse, we didn't reach agreement. We want to continue to have lines to communicate. want to continue to have lines of communication with them and try to find the best possible solution there. So, yeah, as Supervisor Bone mentioned, Redwood Fields has historically been used for informal access, but until the development agreement is approved and certain phases move forward, we'll be limited in terms of how we can try to formalize those access points. Public Works also had early discussions with Redwood Acres going back several years, and we need to restart those communications and try to see if Redwood Acres is interested in a formal agreement to provide public access into the community forest on the fairgrounds. This map shows a zoom-in of that congested area that I was just discussing. And I would say, you know, just historically, a lot of the public access into the McKay tract has come down off of Harris, has gone down the main R-line road, and then has continued on the R-line road, which most of that is on Green Diamond property. So to wrap up, the staff report. We're ready to open the North Ridge parking area. There's approximately four miles of trails that are still a work in progress but ready for public use. Additional trails will be opened when they're constructed and when they're connected to appropriate access points. We also have the need for a total of 10 trail bridges, and so those require a special design and permitting process, but those are needed to cross waterways and to connect the various trail units. Like I mentioned, connecting the northern and southern parts of the community forest will depend on an easement on the North McKay Ranch subdivision. We have a lot of work to do, but I'm confident we can do it because of the community interest, and really, our job as county staff is to channel and unleash the passion and the skills and the energy of people who are interested in helping develop trails. And I think they're inspired because the trails in the community forest will really provide opportunities for excellent experiences. It's a way to, you know, create recreation for physical health and mental health. It's a place to meet people and to form bonds. It's a place to do learning and contemplation, and it's a place to try to make improvements for future generations to be able to experience a forest right in Eureka's backyard. So staff recommendation is to approve the attached resolution, and I'm paraphrasing the main actions. The resolution would approve the trail plan, approve and adopt, certify and adopt the initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration, the SECA document for the trail plan. The resolution would adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the trail plan. It would also approve the forest stewardship plan. And then staff recommendations include approving a memorandum of understanding with the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association. We have an existing MOU with the Humboldt Trails Council for the volunteer trail stewards, and the MOU with Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association is directly analogous, and they have a lot of skills and a lot of people-power and a lot of interest in helping develop mountain bike trails as part of the trail network. We would also like the board to provide guidance whether Public Works should initiate a process to consider changing the name of the McKay Community Forest. A few of the comments that came in on the forest stewardship plan made that recommendation.
Supervisor Bone? I'm sorry. Sorry, Hank.
So would it stop there, and I don't know why we're going to, but I've always, I've lived out there for 65-plus years, and I've always known that it's that. Would we change the name? Would we further then change the name of Ryan Creek? Because, I mean, I don't know where it starts or stops, and I just, I asked this yesterday of somebody that emailed me, and they just said historically, names should be changed, and I'm kind of stuck on Rex, so hopefully they don't change it on me. I'm just saying, I don't understand, there was how many letters wanted the name changed?
My recollection is some of the commenters expressed the view that the name McKay is associated with an older period of history, and maybe this is an opportunity with the creation of the community forest to have a name that has more of a connection with contemporary situation.
The future, not the past? I'm old. I kind of like the past, but, okay, I just want to know the reasoning and where it stops, where it starts and stops. We're changing, and you guys have got a lot of nice Redwood signs out there already. Should we have held on that, or...? I'm just asking the question. I don't, I don't have a, why do you have a problem with it, but I don't know what...
Yeah, I think as staff, we wanted to bring this forward for discussion, and then in the staff report, we identified some potential next steps, and those would, you know, we wouldn't move fast. We'd want to do outreach and consider options, and, you know, I think we'll see a lot of different views. I think some people will be attached to the name McKay. I think some people will have ideas for alternative names. It'd be good to have that discussion, and then I think the newly-formed advisory group would be a good forum for that, and then at the appropriate time, we can bring it back to the board for further discussion.
Okay.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. So I'm wondering about the forest stewardship. Is the timber owned by the county, or was it retained? It is owned by the county?
Yes.
So the, so we would, the county would log it, and then the monies would be used for, to further the trails, or what does that look like?
And let me start by saying that the county was very fortunate that we were able to work with the Trust for Public Land and state and federal funding agencies to acquire the property without any debt, and I think that's somewhat unique for these types of situations. Your board approved, really thinking of this as a public enterprise where we would use the revenues from timber harvest to reinvest in the property. Since 2014, we, our expenditures have been funded through an internal loan from the general fund, and so the first use of the timber harvest revenues will be to pay back that loan, and then the next use will be to reinvest in developing the access points and trails, which will require, you know, quite a bit of work. And then, you know, at some point, we should have, you know, it depends on market conditions and how the harvests go, but I think it's a likely scenario that at some point in the future, there could be surplus revenue that could be used for other purposes.
And I apologize for not knowing I wasn't around then. So when you, you know, you decide to go forward with logging, then does it, just like a contractor's job, it would be submitted out to the public, and that, it would go the same way?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks so much.
And I see Supervisor Wilson has his hand up.
Thanks. Hey, I just wanted to really commend staff and Green Diamond and everyone who's been involved, and I want to, special shout-out to Supervisor Bone, who really put a lot of work into this process as well. I concur with this staff report and the recommendations made in it, and I want to say that, you know, some years, many years ago, the city of Arcata took a similar path, and often I, you know, look at projects like this, and I think, okay, where else has been done, and, you know, would they, would they have not done it, knowing what they know now? And I think the city of Arcata, as a resident, has been there a long time, and I can say that it was a good decision. I think this is a good decision. I'm also in favor of having the discussion around the name change, and so I'm happy to either make a motion or support a motion to do all of that when the time comes.
All right. I assume you're parked in one place, right?
I've been parked here for the entire time.
Okay. I thought so. I just wanted to make sure in case anyone wondered. I think we can go out to, after Supervisor Bone's comment or question, we'll go to public comment.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've seen this. Craig Compton has been, we had quite a few conversations, and Hank and I and John, you know, from Trust for Public Lands, they were great. I mean, we had so much interactions and everything else. I think we're going to have an opportunity now to hear from the Trails Council, because when I go out to the ballfields on Saturday morning and to do some work and see 30 or 40 little minions standing over there by the tool shed wanting to go out and do stuff, and I think, you, when you talk about this, you know, the volunteer Trails Council, they, they're pretty amazing of what they've been doing and going out there and everything else. I will warn them that if you haven't heard, Saturday would be a bad idea, so you might want to pick your tools up early and meet at North Ridge, so, but, because we have soccer, and there'll be like eight million people there. But I think, I spent, I've been spending quite a bit of time, I walk the trails quite a bit. I cheat and go through the Simpson property or Green Diamond property or through Redwood Fields, so I remember our initial meeting was back in 2014, 15 at Winship, and I think there was close to 300 people there, 250 people there, and I remember I asked everybody, I says, "How many people walked this forest?" And about three-quarters of the room raised their hand emphatically, and I told them that they were all trespassing. And that was soon, which was, exactly, that was the reaction. But that was soon going to change, and the interaction and what it's going to provide for our community and is already providing. It's pretty amazing how many people, and with the North Ridge parking lot opening up on the north side of it where it's unpaved, I think that's where the horse trailers, are we doing, the horse trailers can park. And I think some of us were at RCRC two weeks ago, and if you don't think bikes are a big deal, look what it did to Downeyville. We looked, it was probably one of the most amazing videos, presentations we've ever had at RCRC, and one guy has turned that whole town around just on mountain biking. And now we have a mountain bike high school team. We had the team here, we had a meet here last year, I think brought in over 100 people, and then they have their other bike races. So there's a lot to add to this, so I think the overall recreational aspects and everything to this are, the same thing we said eight years ago when we first started this, we're going to be massive and pretty enjoyable for the whole community.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor Bone. So I think at this time, we will go to public comment. If you happen to be listening to this or watching this on a video, on a video if you're at your house, you need to press star nine to raise your hand if you want to speak, but we will go to those who are here with us in person first. So, welcome, and there's a standard three-minute limit, and behind me is the clock to keep track of. Oh, just, we can, we can hold on right there. Maybe you can give them to Hank, and we can pass them out. Yeah, we are. We're going to hand them out to us, that you, yeah, we just have a process here. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you. Let me start, actually, I should introduce myself. David Green, I'm the resident in the in-holding. David Green, I'm the resident.
David, go ahead and talk in the microphone. We'll just, maybe get closer to it.
Okay. I am the resident, and we're perfectly happy to have that forest used as extensively as possible. Our issue involves a word that we didn't hear in Mr. Seaman's presentation, which is the word "safety." He proposes that a half-mile of the R-1 road becomes a melee of trucks, cars, dogs, and children, and he, we have tried to explain what we see as these potential difficulties. Lots of vehicles are coming down that road. It isn't just us or our renters. There's PG&E has a, has a gas line out there. They're constantly out trimming back trees. This is not a good place to be mixing people and vehicles, and the only time this gets broached at all is obliquely, in a single paragraph of the plan where we're told that having, in rural counties, having space shared between vehicles and people is quite normal. It's really safe. He then gives, he cites two specific examples. In the handout, you can see those examples at the top of page two. Those are nothing like the R-1 road, which you see at the bottom of page two. The top, the Letts Avenue, is absolutely straight. A driver has no problem seeing to right or left any kid who might be in the vicinity. The other one, there's no trees at all, even though there is a curve. Again, drivers have unimpeded vision. By contrast, the R-1 road is, has tight curves. The forests are dense on either side of that road. In consequence, if a child darts out around one of those curves, just cuts across a curve, the driver has little or no time to react. So due diligence would require that this be taken, I think, a good deal more seriously than it has been so far by Public Works. Okay, so anyway, moving on, there's, we proposed a better solution, which is not mentioned in the plan, and that would be one that was completely in the forest, but we were told by Mr. Seaman it would cost more, and it would take longer, and therefore it was rejected out of hand. Our second-best solution, which does get mentioned in the plan, was that he would, that we would have a corridor on one side of the R-1 road that was cordoned off in some manner. As you can see in the plan, he rejects that out of hand, saying that the people wouldn't pay attention. They would just go on the main R-1 road instead, and therefore, why bother? Well, the answer, why bother?
I'm sorry, Mr. Green. It's very good, but thank you. It was helpful to have this.
The answer is liability. That's why you bother.
Thank you. All right. And the next speaker? And please, anyone who wants to comment, go ahead and stand by the side of the door so I know how many people are going to be speaking, so, come on up, Holly. And everybody else, please do stand over there just so I can keep track. Thank you. Welcome, Holly. Nice to see you again.
Can't believe I have to lower this. I'm shrinking. Like Rex, I grew up here. Many, many happy memories. I remember taking my little red bug and parking out at Redwood Fields, and the spaces were so narrow, I had to back the bug out so the kids could unload to go to the ballgame, and then found Rex and complained, I might even say bitched. The parking spaces are too narrow. I had to back the bug up to let the kids out and then park, and then, in a not very ladylike manner, extracted myself from my little red bug so we could go and watch the game. Seriously, this, I went to the summit Saturday at the Sequoia Conference Center. I was blown away by the planning, the just absolute awesomeness of what we are doing with this skinny, landlocked piece of property. Rex, you are magnificent. Michelle, you know what this renaming stuff is going to devolve, devolve into. I could not be happier with what we are trying to do as a community to make everybody healthier, mentally and physically. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. All right, well, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Michael Prue with the Humboldt Trails Council, and we are the organization that sponsors the volunteer trail stewards program that Hank has described and Supervisor Bone has lauded, so I appreciate your comments. Basically, I just want to say we are thrilled. We've been waiting for the McKay to be developed into a system of trails, and we have VTS presence out there now as of last month. We have our regular VTS program, which is a monthly, three-hour workforce, and because the McKay requires it at this point, there's also a more intensive, two-day-a-week, six-hour-a-day delta force is what they're calling it, to develop trails. Thirty-one miles of trails are in the process of being developed. Thirty-one miles of trails are in the process of being developed, and, and I am just absolutely floored by that and thrilled, and, and I thank Hank for all of his work and diligence in bringing this to fruition. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. Welcome.
Hi there, Dennis Houghton, and I'm working currently as, in a trail consultant with the county, and indeed, as Michael just stated, was actually out there today, we're working on the parking lot out at North Ridge and some of the radiating trails out from there. And just happy to report that so far in the last month, for the Saturday workdays, we've averaged about twenty people per event, we'll be having one this Saturday, and we will be meeting at the North Ridge parking lot. And for November as well, because of soccer and all that, my kids were there a few years back.
You're gonna, you're gonna be fine in November.
Okay.
I believe, I'll let you know for sure, but I think you're fine in November, it's the only overlap.
Sounds good. Yeah, so, it's been great. So far, the ADA accessible trail at North Ridge that Hank had mentioned, the Huckleberry Trail, we've completed like what we'll call Phase One, getting all the dirt work done. That trail will be rocked with crushed rock in the future, which will make it completely ADA accessible. And some of the other NR5, NR10, Bob Hill Gulch Trail, we've completed sections on that. Today, we had eight volunteers out there. Kind of interesting to note that it's sixty-one, I was the youngster out there, people ranging from sixty-one until seventy-two, so, of all the volunteers, so we have a lot of baby members that are out there, just because they want to be, and it's providing good exercise and ways to get out there. Also, when we're out there, the forest is heavily used. Mountain bikers, seniors, young people, families, mothers pushing strollers, et cetera, and I just feel real good about the work that's going on out there, and what it's gonna provide for our community. So, yeah, just really looking forward to continuing with this work. And just in previous employment, I was with City of Arcata, and worked in the Arcata Community Forest for a number of years, real solid plan there, and I feel like this, this plan definitely mirrors that, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. If you've called in, I see a couple numbers, you need to pressure, press star nine to raise your hand, or we won't know you want to speak. And so, right now, there are no hands up. Right, Nikki, okay, is there anyone else in the public who's here with us today that wanted to comment on this item? All right, so we'll go to those on the phone.
Supervisor Madron has just raised his hand.
Okay, well, I'll go to him after public comment, so, I don't think I can limit him to three minutes. All right, there are no hands that have been raised of the two numbers that are up there, so at this point, we will go back to the board, and Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to express tremendous gratitude to Hank Seaman, all of our staff, the consultants, adjacent landowners, Kramer Properties, the in holders, David Green and Melvin McCawber, and everybody for working hard to try and create a magnificent plan here. You know, the only concern that I've heard expressed in the letters and, and here again today is the shared use of the R1 road. And so, in the short term, I would say that we just have to be incredibly diligent with keeping the size of that road, mowed to the furthest extent we can, to create as wide of a corridor and as much visibility for that shared use, and I know that's also what Hank and the plan really speaks to, but let's, let's just be sure that we really do that. It's been hard, excuse me, it's been hard to get to all our mowing lately, but this is one of those places where it really has to be a priority. In the long term, I do think it's feasible to build a trail separate from our one road, and to be able to get all of that trail use off of that road, I think that's an ideal thing, and that would be the only improvement I would make to the plan, is that in the long term, we identify how to do that, and I will say that there's a tremendous amount of money out there right now for trails, and the CCCs have an abundance of funds to come in and help build it, along with these incredible trail stewards to help maintain it, and volunteers that are out there helping to build, as David and others have said. So, in a coupes for the good plan, let's just add that one improvement, if we can, for a long-term separate trail, to get people off the R1 road if we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Oh, and the last thing I wanted to say, excuse me, last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, the, the end of the trail, the very south end of the McKay Forest, is only a couple of miles from the Elk River, Headwaters Forest, there's an old railroad grid that goes up Ryan Creek and over the Lower Divide there and down into Elk River, and we could work with Green Diamond, I'm hoping, and other landowners to make that connection someday, because the more connectivity we have on these trails, the more options for longer trail activities, loop trails, all that kind of stuff. So I would offer that as a potential future consideration, to make those connections between those two trail systems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Bone?
I think we had that presentation a few years ago here, didn't we, Hank, about connecting those two, and working with Craig and Green Diamond? Were you involved in that conversation?
I think there's two concepts for a southern extension from the community forest. One is, I would say, southwestward towards ultimately, you know, first Eggit Road, and then potentially Elk River Road, and then what Supervisor Madron mentioned, which is more of a southward expansion, perhaps, you know, working with Humble Redwood Company on a connection to the Headwaters Forest.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, there's been a plan drawn out, I've seen it, and I'm trying to remember when, I thought we had a presentation from you on it, but, that was part of the, that was part of the, when we were acquiring this last two-hundred acres, that was part of the initial, I thought, that we were gonna expand even farther, but anyway.
If there's, if there's planned development along Elk River Road, that creates an opportunity to integrate, you know, really, our focus has been incremental progress on the land we have, and, you know, opening the North Ridge parking area is going to be a big milestone. We have not done work around Redwood Acres, and I just want to emphasize that, you know, Redwood Acres and Harris Street, you know, it's logical that the informal access will likely continue, but, you know, it's not officially open, and we haven't made improvements to try to address that, but that will be the next priority after the North Ridge area gets opened.
And some of the issues, I think some of the, well, I just, yeah, we have to control, we, there hasn't been any accidents, and we look forward to having no accidents, and I, no, you know, Dr. Green, Mr. Green has, they've got some, you know, Bill Wine's lived down there for years, who I think he purchased the property from when they spun it out, and before that, a host of other people that I, since I grew up a couple blocks from there. So, it sounds like we're addressing the issue, not to the satisfaction that they would like, but I think if we keep working on that, and that would work great for all parties involved.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve staff recommendation, along with direction to work on name change in the future. I recommend a yes vote on that, and to speak to that, I do think there are, there are some issues that will not only exist, but will come up as, as things move forward, that this plan is, is what it is today, and there'll be additions from outside the area, you know, in terms of connecting outward, and, you know, management issues within that will have to be adjusted for as time moves forward, so I, I'm confident that staff will be, continue to do that. But nonetheless, I reiterate the motion, which is to approve staff recommendation, and ask that they begin the process for looking at a potential name change.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell? Do we have a second out there, Supervisor Madron, would you like to second? It's hard when I can't see people.
Second the motion.
Okay, because there is discussion, thank you very much for that, Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, through the chair. Hank, I wanted to, so, I'm not familiar with the area, and I'm just reading Mr. Green's, do you have this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, it says that he's repeatedly tried to, you know, engage you in conversations about what his concerns are, have you addressed those with him?
We've had several meetings and conversations over the last few years, we had one, I think, back in May, but we, we didn't reach agreement.
You, you did?
We didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah.
Okay, as it states, so, I'm just wondering, with that road, and what would you anticipate the increased foot traffic would be, or could be, and have you done a study, or determined what you think the increased foot traffic would be?
We haven't done a study, I think it's really difficult to predict. You know, in the baseline conditions, what we have today, the, you know, the public use there is very dispersed, there's a lot of social trails, you know, we haven't done any trail building there, so it's all organic trails, so it's very unorganized, and we think that the proposed trail network in the trail plan will make a lot of improvements, and that we would also include signs that would, you know, provide warnings that there's the shared use. You know, it's also just really important that the drivers on that road drive slowly and with the consideration for safety.
I understand that, but as he referenced, children, learning to drive, things happen, and, you know, I, I would hate to not address it and then have something happen, I understand that it's driver's responsibility, it's also pedestrians' responsibility, and, and so, when especially we, it's been brought to our attention, I want to make sure that we're addressing, addressing it, at least I do in this conversation. I'm wondering, the, is there, how wide is that road?
You know what varies, we talked about that in the staff report.
Is there, is there sufficient space to maybe have foot traffic be specific, since it is a shared road with vehicles?
You know, the challenge is that the width varies, and, you know, the, the landowners, the in holding owners proposed, you know, a system of paddles that be installed to try to create a lane adjacent to the vehicular travelway on the road. We don't think that that would be effective, and it also, that creates a constraint on vehicles traveling on the road, so we just don't see that as a really effective solution.
So we intend to put organized, we intend to put more trail structure on this A road?
The R1 road?
Oh, I'm sorry, the R1 road, yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that the R1 road, part of it is owned by Green Diamond, part of it's owned by the county, these landowners have an easement for their use on the road.
I read that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do we intend to put more organized trails off this road?
This is a spot that's very challenging to find an alternative route, because...
That's, Hank, that's not what I'm asking, are you putting more trails off of this road?
I'm not sure what you mean by off the road.
I mean, so, will, will trails be accessed, you said that this is a very unorganized trail system off, off of this?
In this whole vicinity.
Oh, and, so, do we intend to do any infrastructure that will increase foot traffic on this, on this road?
Ultimately, yes.
Yeah, do you know, and you haven't, you don't know the amount that it would increase?
We don't.
You don't?
Yeah, I, I don't have a good handle on what the existing use is, and the proposed use, again, it depends on an easement from the North McKay Ranch subdivision, but then we would have a bypass trail there.
Yeah.
And so that would be, you know, having a formal connection would, I would expect, would lead to some increase in use.
Okay, and Mr. Green's letter states that the, which, he says he tried to communicate to you that the use is not, is pretty minimal right now, but that he is, his concerns are the increased use with development of trails there, so, thank you for answering my questions.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes, I applaud Supervisor Bushnell for asking those questions. You know, I, I agree that the terrain is difficult, but I've designed and built a lot of trails in my career, and it may cost more, but I'm sure we can do it, and so I guess what I'm hoping, I also just sent a request to Public Works to get out and mow the R1 road. It is very overgrown, we're short on staff and mowers, and I get that, but this is one of those places where we really have a safety concern, and I, so I've asked for them to please get out and mow it to the furthest extent they can without cutting down trees, and once that's done, it will increase site distances and increase safety in the short term, so I think we need to do that, and we need to stay on top of that, so I'm glad this came up today, and we can provide that direction to staff. But I would be willing to help, I know Hank has some great people on there, David Houghton and many others, but I do think we can probably build a separate trail from the R1 road, it will cost significant because of the terrain, but the funding's out there, and I think in the long term, we really need to be looking to try and do that. You know, it's rare for a plan of this magnitude to come forward and only really have one concern, I mean, how often do we see that? You know, usually there's volumes of concerns, and we have one concern left here, and I think we can do a lot in the longer term to make that better, so, I'm ready to support the plan as is, but I do think that we can figure out that alternative down the road, and in the meantime, let's get it mowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Bone?
How much of the R-line do we own? We only own that one little chunk down there, right?
Nikki, would it be possible to bring up the presentation with the map?
Yeah, me.
Slide twenty-three. Great, thank you. So this map, it doesn't show the R-line coming down from Harris, but there's about a third of a mile of the R-line, and that's owned by Green Diamond. And we're proposing a separate and parallel trail from the R-line, so there would not be formal public use on that R-line road. And then the R1 road, point three miles is owned by Green Diamond, point two miles is owned by the county. The county has an easement for public use on Green Diamond's portion of that road, and so, you know, of that half-mile, we're proposing shared use for, I think it was point four-five miles?
Okay, I'm just, all right, I'm thinking we don't have mowers, we're almost, almost as easy to get a hand crew in there and clean that up as, because it's such a limited, limited, I didn't think it was, and we don't own it, just an easement, so I don't...
Yeah, you know, it's, it's really a challenging situation, because it's not formally open for public use.
Yeah.
And by doing that mowing, that may convey a message that it's open for public use, but that we're really not encouraging the public to use that.
And with opening North Ridge, I expect to see a little more traffic, for somebody to see something new, because I know that a lot of those people that park on Harris Street, and I'm, I'm surprised that it's limited use, because there always seems to be twelve to fifteen cars parked at Harris Street, but we were told it was limited use. So I, I firmly believe that they're probably going to come in on North Ridge, I think we're gonna start seeing more use in that area, and actually, as we talk about it more and more at Redwood Fields, because I get quite a few of the bike riders out of Redwood Fields, mainly because bikes are a little bit, for the hardy, it's okay, that's a pretty good steep climb coming up to get up there, but you're kind of starting at Redwood Fields, you get a little more levels, so, I think if we start, if we just keep working with the in holdings, and, and, and seeing what we can do, I mean, and, I mean, what we can do is what's feasible, you know, and I know the, if we don't need to build any more trails, because the watershed is right there, Ryan Creek is right there, so we want to be very cognizant of that, so, anyway, I have complete faith in you guys making it work.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair, so the shared use of that is like a quarter of a mile, or three-quarters of a mile?
Point four-five miles, a little less than a half-mile. Little less than a half mile.
A little less than a half mile.
And, you know, one side of that road is steep hillside, and that's also Green Diamond's property. So that's, the hillside is not county property. And then the other side of the road is Flood Plain and a lot of wetlands from Ryan Creek.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for answering all my questions. And it does sound like something that we can work out, hopefully, with Mr. Green and that his, as he references to renters also up in there. So that, that would be great, if we can work on some solutions.
Supervisor Bone?
And just a little side note, 29 years ago, that was where Redwood Fields was going to go, is down there on that Flood Plain. And we, they said, and we had a 50-year flood, actually three times in that one year, and there was no way we could build down there. So that's how we ended up up there at the end of Fern Street. But that's the first 14 months of Redwood Fields, that's where it was going to domicile.
All right, so, yes, Nikki?
Supervisor Wilson looked like he might have dropped off and came back on, and under an attendee, he had his hand raised, but I just moved him to panelists, and his hand went down. So I'm not sure if that's the way the system works, or if he'd still like to speak.
So Supervisor Wilson, raise your hand again.
No, no, just that my, my phone overheated for a minute because it's sitting in the sun. I'm back.
Okay. Thank you. So any, if there's no further conversation, we can probably vote. Seems like a good idea.
Okay. I'm going to start with Supervisor Wilson.
Yes, yes, yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell?
I hate to do this, but I have a clarifying question. Is part of this motion to reevaluate the name, or are we going to...
It says potential, is what it came in the motion. Conversation of the potential change of name.
It just doesn't, it wasn't listed on the screen there. But that is part of the motion?
And that, with that, I'm sorry, but with that, because you had, Hank, you had reference to possibly having the committee work on that. So is that given direction, or what does that mean, to have that in this motion? That we're going to address it, or are you going to address it through your... Mike, you did that.
Supervisor Wilson?
My, my intention was to, my intention was to go as written in the staff report, to direct staff to work on a name, a potential name change. And I would just leave it to them to, to start that process however they see fit.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bone?
Yes, I just don't understand the name change. I just, I did, I'm wondering if all permits will have that avenue when we, in all things coming forward for a name change.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Hank. We'll see, apparently now we can see you on Thursday. All right, cool. All right, so I think that's...
Thank you, Hank.
...the end of our work, is it not? All right. Well, those of you who want to be with us again tomorrow, we'll be here at 9 o'clock. So we're adjourned.